...Monday, August 5th, 2013, at 7:30 to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Adoption of agenda. Any additions or deletions?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to remove Minuteman Business Number 6, her attorney. So that will be deleted from the agenda from this point on.
Thank you.
I would also like to add L. Steward of Avan, we're all training for the in-house audit. I don't have any paperwork, I just would like...
Discussion?
I'd like to add in a new business, sale of fire department property.
Laura L.
Jane. Oh yeah, I'm sorry, Emma, yes.
Also to number four, removal of public hearings, no public hearing tonight, correct? Any other additions or deletions? Remove number four, public hearing, there is no public hearing tonight. Can you hear me now, is it?
Yeah.
Move it up a little bit. Is it just my mic, or are you hearing the other mics, okay? If anybody has any trouble... There is no public hearing scheduled. Before, before we can go on and read a statement too, to address a lot of concerns, so we're just gonna approve the agenda right now as it is. There's no additions or deletions.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda of Monday, August 5th, with the deletions and additions as mentioned. Supporters.
Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by clerk Keith. In our counter discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Before we get to public comments, I just want to read a statement for the public, because I think a lot of you are here for the landfill issue. So what I'd like to start off with is, this is obviously a very significant issue for our community. However, at this point, nothing has been presented to us to decide, as Lennox Township. As a result, this is not on our agenda tonight, but we're not just waiting, we are out gathering as much information as we can with our township attorney, Mr. Jobbick, so that we will have as good an understanding as possible of the facts and the options available to us. Additionally, we understand there's a town hall meeting in New Haven this Wednesday, and an upcoming village council meeting. And if everybody's not aware, that meeting for the, for the village, and I believe it's being sponsored by the person proposing the landfill, will be at Endeavor Middle School. I believe that these efforts will help us to be prepared to make informed decisions on this when and if the time comes. We appreciate all your comments regarding this matter. We would ask if you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and please, no repetitious comments. We do have a large agenda tonight, would be happy to hear anybody who would like to speak. And in saying that, I will open it up to public comment. When you do approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Hey, behind us, Cypress Road, Lennox Township. I just wanted to inform the people in the audience, we had a break in Nick's store house today, sometime between 7:30 when he left for work.
Fix the mic.
Fix it.
Do you pull closer torch, please?
Oh, okay. Sometime between 7:30 when he left for work and 1:30 when she got home from work, right through a front window facing the road. They got guns, they took a safe. There must have been more than one person for the type of stuff that they stole. And also, regarding the landfill issue, you guys fight it for all your worth. We tried once, we lost, let's see if we can win this one.
Thank you. Other public comment?
My name is Kathleen Thompson. I was at the meeting when they pushed this through, and it was so un-American that I can't tell you, it was horrible the way they pushed that through. And I'm not sure just how we're going to fight this or battle against it, because I heard that this is going to be decided by the county commissioners. So it's important that everyone contacts their county commissioner and let them know how they feel about this. And also, I think we're going to have to show up in numbers like we are tonight, even I'm hoping that at the Endeavor School on Wednesday, that we get a huge, huge crowd that the gym or the cafeteria can't even hold us all. Because it's going to take more than just a few of us to make this go away. And, you know, money talks, and Rizzo's got a lot of money behind him, but we've got the numbers, and it's just important that everybody sticks together, and they stay on this, and they don't let them get away with it. Because this is our home. Some of us have been here for 40 years, 75 years, even if you've only been here for a short time, you have an investment in the community. And the school has spent a lot, the community has spent a lot of money supporting the schools, redoing part of the high school, almost all of the high school, building Endeavor, building the New Haven Elementary School. And for what, so that we can have a dump on our back doorstep? My daughter lives on Frost Road now. She's taking her pool down, because there's so much seagull crap every day, she can't keep the pool clean. So, you know, we have those things to look forward to, and we spend, the village spent. And the reason that they're doing this, I guess, is because they spent so much money putting water in sewer, down for action, so that we can take all that money that was spent on water in sewers, because we thought it would be developed. And now we're gonna have a mile or two miles of landfills? For what? That doesn't, you know, that, that doesn't make you have a better community. So, you know, we have been working on this, there's 47 pages in that document that the village council approved the other day. And I'm sure that most of those people on that council did not read that, and did not study it, because it's a pretty tight proof document. So I'm hoping that the village, or that the township attorney knows something that we don't, and that we get some help with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment.
I'm Mark Tromley, I live at 57470 Ameth Stride, in the village of New Haven. I just wanted to say that even though Pine Tree Acres, they had that lawsuit about the smells and stuff, there are stills anywhere from two to four to six days of the, of the year, that we do still smell the dump, even at our house, and we're right next to 26 Mile Road, that's almost three miles away. We also have that asphalt, which is all, this is in the village, but we have that asphalt recycling plant, and it's also, because we're also part of Lennox Township, we have that, and we have anywhere from three to six days of smoke and smell coming at us. And I'm glad that you brought up about the seagulls, because when you go by Pine Tree Acres, that's all you see is these seagulls that are all over the place. And I just couldn't even imagine on 27 Mile Road, having all these seagulls coming around. And I just, I just, I'm in awe that this has happened. I'm just, I just cannot believe it, that this was put through. And I just wanted to tell, have my name and our, my family's name out there, to say that we are totally against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. Mike Tabor, Twinay Mall Road, Lennox Township. You know, I read the article from Voice, and New Haven made the assertion that basically landfills are their last option. The landfill is their last option, it's because New Haven administrators have failed it. Period.
Yep.
New Haven has known more for its antics than it has for its growth. So I'll give a second.
Hi. I'm Reverend George, and I'm an American, and I'm here to remind everyone on the board that we elected you, and that we are counting on you to do what is right. We're counting on you, we're here, fill this room, counting with anticipation that you guys make the right decision. We elected you, and we want you to make the right decision, for the benefit of the community, not for the benefit of a few crooks.
My name's Gabrielle Gittens, and I live on Amherst Avenue. The transfer station and the compost facility is, I've heard rumors that it's supposed to be basically in my backyard. And also, Merit Academy, which is the school that I attend, is right around the corner. And I, I, there's people that go to my school that come all the way from Marine City, and our school is just starting to get really brought up, like there's many students coming now, it's, we just got football started, and it's, it's, it's a big deal. And we're trying to get our school to be bigger and better. And this landfill might, people don't want to go to a school that stinks, basically. And I'm gonna come home, and I'm still gonna smell it, it's in my backyard. I, I mean, I'm gonna be graduating in a few years, but I'm gonna be leaving my family there, and my grandparents who live right next door to me. It would just be a big help if everybody got, came together on Wednesday and went to Endeavor. I started a Facebook page, it's called Northern McCombe Youth, it's just a basically a bunch of teens that I'm trying to get together, and to help do a silent protest this Wednesday. And we asked that everybody wear green and make your own signs, just to protest, protest against this, because we don't want this in our community.
Yeah, my name is Lynn Thompson, and I live on the Clay's Road. This landfill is done through New Haven, but it's gonna be on Lennox Township property, correct? Isn't that signed? Is that Lennox, or is that New Haven?
There's been some documents that have been presented to us, and we still don't know all the facts, and that's what our attorneys are deciphering right now, of course.
Okay, this, it happened just overnight, I mean, hadn't been on this at all, I mean...
For us, it did happen overnight, because we didn't have any knowledge of it prior, no, nothing other than a phone call the day before, asking for the attorney and myself to attend a meeting with their attorney, the village president. And prior to that, our phones started ringing that this happened at a meeting, just prior to the meeting, so it took place without any of our knowledge.
Okay, so you haven't had a chance to address this yet?
None, and that's been all of our statements, till we get all the facts and all the information to comment on something, and we're not even asked to make a decision at this point. That's why we waited on our attorney. With something of this magnitude that'd affect our community, this, this is the right steps to take. Take all the information we can, so that anything that we tell our residents is the truth and factual, not hypothetical.
Well, we wanna make sure we do not get any more landfills around here, we got enough. Am I wrong, or is there an ITC corridor that goes through there? How do they work around that?
I have no idea.
That Endeavor meeting is supposed to be at 6 o'clock, okay, it's about 7:30. I can't be sure, well...
I can't tell you too, sir, we are, I've contacted our EMS director, Mr. White, and he's volunteered shuttle service too, from the village hall, that we could bus people out to the school, the ones that can't get a ride, so that there can be more of an attendance. That affects the distance, the distance of the, of the school from the center of town. So we are gonna be supplying shuttles, and Jeff, will that run about every hour or so?
Yeah, what we're asked to do, I'm sorry, I'm talking about EMS, what we're asked to do by EMS, is make sure that the folks who may not get transportation, or maybe certain parking, or things like that, they have shuttle vehicles that will run from the village offices on the main road over to the end of the school, especially for our seniors, disabled folks, things like that. I would share with you that if there are, if you know somebody who's disabled, they wanna be there, wheelchair out, or walk, or something like that, our vehicles aren't equipped to be able to take them, it would certainly be more than happy to get them there, you know, to the meeting, and if they just call our office ahead time before Wednesday, we may, we'll actually go right to your house and there. So that number for anybody who needs it is 749-7713.
And just to back up a second too, I can't speak for the whole board right now, but I believe the same understanding, that no one else had knowledge of this prior to anything happening, just, just for the record. But also too, the President Kincaid did call and ask for that shuttle transportation also, after we started thinking about that, to get as many bodies out there to the school for the meeting.
All right, well, just protect our interest, I mean, this is our township, we don't need New Haven telling us what to do with their property, so...
Well, I can, I can tell you too also, we're not gonna do anything in haste, that's why we're taking appropriate measures with our attorney, to make sure that we're covered and our residents are covered.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just for information...
Excuse me one second, please. Can I finish the public comment, and I'll be happy to take any questions from you.
There wasn't a question.
Sir?
Dave Mary, Frost Road, Lennox Township. I have a flyer that was handed out to the residents, I guess, of New Haven. I picked this one up at that little Dairy Queen there on, I'm gonna crash it. And one of the paragraphs in here, Chuck Rizzo stated that, in a live chat with The Voice, that this is, he's been in talks with the officials from New Haven since 2001 regarding
That's all I have.
My name is Mary Pedac, I live on 27 Mile Road in Lennox, and my family has been in this area for nearly 50 years. I was at the meeting last night, that was held at Merit Academy, and they did state, two of the, the two people on their council who voted against the landfill, and their treasurer, said they received information on this 24 hours prior to that meeting, first that they were told about it. But the Rizzo representatives that were there acknowledged that they were approached by the representative from the New Haven Council six months ago. So it was kept secret from their council as well. And it states in their document that there will be, that if the landfill is not approved, then it would be the transfer facility that's either or, there's information that's being given out. But they acknowledge that there really is nothing that precludes both of them being there, and that there's nothing that precludes trash for the transfer station being brought in from other areas. So it could become, you know, major importing of trash to that transfer station, which does include toxic household chemicals, if this, if this is put through, because they, Rizzo acknowledged that, or their representative did, that nothing precludes that. I really hope that everyone will be at that meeting Wednesday, and understand while you're there, that this is a presentation by Rizzo, to convince us all how wonderful this is going to be. So keep that in mind when you're listening, and have questions ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Gary, I live at 3278, I'm in New Haven. And I asked this question last night to the Rizzo advocates that were there, and I could not get an answer from them. But out of this deal, New Haven is receiving $750,000 upfront for this landfill, of which $250,000 of it is going to Lennox. Now, if nobody knows about this landfill, where did that number come from? Did somebody just grab $250,000 and say, "Let's give it to Lennox, because we like them"?
Well, that number must be coming from them, because we have all their knowledge other than the documents who provided, there's been nothing that's been agreed upon, or nothing that's been asked of us to decide at this point, at all.
It's in, it's in the write-up, that $250,000 will go to Lennox off the top.
They can, they can put down on paper whatever they want, but I can tell you, nothing's been presented to us to vote on, for any type of monetary...
So basically, you'll take whatever they give you if this goes through?
No, that's not, that's not true, it's...
Well, I'm saying, they're offering you $250,000, but nobody seems to know anything about this landfill in Lennox.
That's correct.
Okay, again, no answers.
One, one second, sir, on behalf of, one second, please ma'am. Sir, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions. If you want to put it in a question format, I will answer your question right now. If you're asking us if we have any knowledge of any money, I'll ask the board, do you have any knowledge of any money being paid to us? Absolutely not. Be happy to answer it.
That's fine.
Okay, I just want to make sure you get the answer. Sorry, ma'am.
I'm Jan Korg, I live at Bramblewood, that should explain it right there, the senior center, low income, handicapped, including those that can't speak for themselves, so I'm here to represent them. I wanted to get ahold of that 42-page document, which I was told by New Haven City, cost me $25 if I wanted that 42-page document. Anyone that wants it, is gonna pay full $25 to the city. Another way for New Haven to make a little money, okay? Yes, in fact, in that 42-page document, New Haven gets $500 off the top, and they want you to sell your property, so they can get the full dollar per yard, instead of just getting 25 cents, because New Haven only owns a quarter of that property, you own the other three-quarter, if you sell, don't sell yours, you'll get 75 cents for that yard, and we get only 25 cents for the yard. But my understanding is, that $500,000 that they got, that, we're not counting the $250 they wanted to give you for your three-quarter of a mile property, is not going to be, it's given to us, but we have to put in 500,000 yards of waste first. And then, as the paper says, we're giving Canadian waste, transfer stations are only for toxic waste, pharmaceutical supplies, and radioactive chemicals, products. The problem is, that the second landfill, landfill two, only is for those products I named are no-nos there. So they have to be sent to a transfer station, which means that they won't have a transfer station supposedly by Amherst. Now, Amherst subdivision, not counting the part behind the Amherst subdivision that the city bought for a dollar, we're talking about the other property by the railroad off of Clark Street, by Amherst. Now, from my understanding, I don't want to say I know for sure, but I've been told by residents, that's Kincaid's family's property and farm. And where, who got the dollar property in the back? The issue is, we have three wells there, we have three wells on the other side of the railroad track, that's our well water, that is the city's reservoir, that is what we're gonna be eating, and drinking, and breathing, is radioactive chemicals, toxic waste, all right, and pharmaceutical chemicals that are not allowed in the landfill, these three things are not allowed in the landfill. This is a type-two landfill. Now, McCombe County stated that only one landfill was allowed in McCombe County. We have it, it's Pine Tree, okay? Now, the other issue is, the EPA has not guaranteed, and has not, we, New Haven has not jumped into all the hoops in order to have a landfill there. Now, it used to be you had to be three miles from a school, three miles from a community to have a landfill. Well, rules have changed, it's only a mile. Well, guess what? The high school, the children's school, the grade school, our community is, well, some of it is a mile away, because they're deciding, Rizzo, they're gonna move their landfill in off their boundary line, even though they own 1,500 feet of that property, a quarter mile in, so we'll make them a mile from our children's school, okay? And on that property, they're gonna plant nice trees and grass, so we have something to good look at, at Meadowbrook, community, okay? Now, let's get back to the real issue. Do we want a landfill? Do we want our children? Isn't enough, and I don't know about this 2001 thing, I haven't seen any facts to state that that was a fact, but the fact of the matter is, we have a foundry in 2004, 2003, that has toxic waste in it, 200 barrels of corrosive chemicals, corrosive, in fact, even some laying on the outside of the building, that were explanable at the temperature that we get in Michigan during the summer, let alone the freezing temperature that we get in the winter. And it laid there. And our city, New Haven, was supposed to pay about $400,000 to have that toxic waste removed, along with 1,500 square thousand, square feet of sand that is covered with lead, causing lung disease for you people, and I've had people that have died from lung disease from the foundry, okay? And also dental problems, and we wanted to talk about brain damage and our children's health, okay? Now, that was in 2004, 2003, it wasn't clean docked then. Mr. Kimball was still asking for them to pay, because you have to have 50% poverty. We didn't make the poverty. Maybe now we will, okay? But the other issue is, people are saying we're gonna walk away from our homes, and there goes the Board of Education, tax base, because nobody's gonna keep paying interest on their homes that will accumulate when they've got 150, 200, and $250,000 homes, because by the time you get done, you're paying 600,000 on the interest for your home. They will just walk away, I've been told by people, they will just walk away, let the city take their home, because they're not gonna pay on that kind of issue. And I can't blame them. They don't want a landfill, they don't want their children's health impaired, it's enough, and I'm still trying to find out from the EPA, that did in fact, we pay the $400,000 to have the foundry properly removed, because we're not counting the lead inside, we're not counting the lab canisters that they had in there. We're talking serious issues here. And I think New Haven has been through enough toxic waste, enough lead poisoning, enough corrosive chemicals, enough airborne pollution, and enough river pollution, and enough well pollution, and some of their wells haven't been checked for some of their information in the last eight years. We haven't even gotten the full, the full facts on some of these issues, as far as what is in our well water, all right? I'm done, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I have a question, my name is Elke Hutter, I live at 27 Clark Street. I'd like to know, is Lennox Township and New Haven meeting together to make this decision, or are you meeting separately to make this decision? Because I, I'd like to invite New Haven, the village, to be in a meeting with you guys up here, and have us all come, because I understand we're, you know, telling you how we feel, but New Haven is also responsible for this. I drove two and a half hours from Lansing to attend a meeting that I was told was a public hearing, and no disrespect to the council, but I drove two and a half hours from Lansing to be told that there was a meeting on this landfill, and there is not. So could you tell me when New Haven's gonna have a meeting with you, so that we can let them know, this is not what we want? At this point, I'm looking out of the area. I'm a college graduate, I like New Haven, I like Lennox, I've been looking around, wanna buy a house, but I don't wanna buy a house here, because of landfills. Thank you.
First off, I have no knowledge of any future meeting, and I'd like to let our attorney respond to what's, what's taking place right now. Steve, if you'd like to.
Sure. What we do know is that New Haven has approved a community host agreement at their meeting, and that agreement does...
Can you hear me?
Okay. I haven't spoken yet, I wasn't sure if this is on.
It's on.
Okay, can you hear me now? Great. Yes, they approved a community host agreement with Rizzo at their meeting, and that agreement, it is a lengthy agreement, as has been mentioned earlier, and it does contain provisions regarding some possible discussions with... because it would potentially involve the township if it goes forward. The township has not been formally given any sort of a proposal for such an agreement at this point in time. Typically, of course, the two communities meet separately and they make decisions on matters separately, and it could very well proceed in that fashion. If there is a desire at some point for the boards to meet together, that could potentially take place. But at this point, as the supervisor mentioned, we're in the very beginning stages of gathering all the information we can on this so that when the time comes for a decision to be made by the township, if it comes, we'll be prepared to do so.
Yes, sir.
My name is Pastor Benesfield. I live in New Haven on Graphic Street, 32142 Graphic Street. I've been in New Haven for 11 years. Bought a home from the borough, thinking that I'm going to be able to sell my house and be able to move on to a better, a better house, better community. But now, since this happened with the landfill and all other things that happened in the past, it seemed like it'd been a nightmare ever since I've been living in New Haven. You know, I come to New Haven for a better life. It seemed like it got, it's been worse for me being here than I was when I was where I was at. You know, I went face with a landfill, went face with all this other stuff that's going on in our community. You know, you're going to really think that you're going to be better, but it seemed like everything began to back up on us, you know? I'm fighting for a better life, I was for a better life. Now, you know, it's been very weary for our whole family, you know? You know, my sister, she's a constable there anyway. She's been fighting ever since she's been on the council. She's been fighting, amen, all this corruption going on in our community and trying to help build a better life for the people in the community. And she's been fighting and fighting and fighting. So we ask that she will help fight with us. Oh, we want, we want to stay in New Haven, but if this ain't no come to an end, then we might have to leave also. We don't want to leave, but like she said today, she said, there are a lot of people talking about packing up and leaving. If this ain't happening, that mean all this corruption is going to fall on Lennox and everybody else. Everybody's trying to move them leave from, from New Haven. A lot of people spent a lot of money on these homes. They're going to pay for a better life, but we haven't seen all this stuff. We're already upside down in our homes. You know, with the economy hit, they knocked our homes upside down. So we, our homework more than the work left is what we paid for, for the homes. So the cost of war just to stay in here, in New Haven. So we battled, trying to stay here until things get better. But they said the, 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 the mortgage, the whole thing is going to uprise, but with this, they're going to bring it back down to the same way we were, or worse than we was before. So we, we rest it all, people. We need to band together, we need to pray together, God will make a change.
Yes, sir.
I hope I didn't take up my three minutes because I just have a real short...
I'll have a real short message.
Even my minister lets me have three chances.
Take mine.
My goal is to make sure everybody has enough time to speak. Everybody's heard.
The one thing I wanted to say was, you know, this is something that should be put on a ballot for the people to decide, not for five people out of seven to make a decision about the rest of our lives. That's not the Democrat, that's not the American way. So we need to make sure that that, that happens. The other thing that I wanted to mention was, the Endeavor School is where this meeting is being held because for anybody that doesn't know, the high school is being renovated and that back hall, you can't even get in there now. And the cafeteria wouldn't hold everybody. The Endeavor School has a stage down the center between the gymnasium and the cafeteria, which is very large. So they'd be able to open that both ways so that people could sit on both sides, in the gym and in the cafeteria. So please be sure that you do attend that meeting. There will be room. And if anyone needs a ride, we can get probably about five to seven people there if you, if you need a ride out there. Our number is 749-3046. But I hope that at least everyone that's here and many, many more show up for the meeting on Wednesday. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you going to be at that meeting?
I am.
The board going to be at that meeting?
I know myself that I believe the attorney plans on attending.
I plan on being at that meeting.
Okay. Can you explain that host agreement? Do you know anything about it? Is there something that you can tell us? And can they do anything with just being a partial owner of the property? Would they have to get approval from this board in order to do what they plan on doing?
Go ahead, Mr. Governor.
Yes, I have read the host, community host agreement as it was presented. It's not a signed copy at this point, but it is what I understand to be the copy that was given at the village council meeting. There are a lot of questions that it raises, and that's a lot of questions that it raises. And those are the things that we are continuing to look into. So I'm not prepared at this point, time to go through that agreement, provision by provision and all the various aspects of it. So that, that does take some time to look into all the various issues that are presented. I will be advising the township board on the matter with communications that I've provided to the board so that they're up to speed with the ins and outs, the ups and downs, and legal options that exist or don't exist for them. And again, at this point, there is no agreement that's been proposed to us in terms of agreeing to this as a township. So there's nothing to decide on any sort of an agreement at this point. The host agreement that they have approved does have, like I said before, does have provisions about what's called a 425 agreement, which is an agreement by which the two communities agree to allow the boundaries of the village to be changed so that the... Am I coming through in and out?
Yeah.
I apologize. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. So, and there's a lot that goes into that sort of an agreement. And then there are potential issues that will be presented to the township if it doesn't enter into an agreement like that. And I'm exploring those as well. And there are a number of other layers to this as well that have to be examined and gone through, what has taken months and months and months to put together, I'm sure. It's going to take us some time to get up to speed on as well.
Just for anyone that's interested, the documentation, the host agreement is online. There's a group in New Haven. They have it posted out there so you can, you can get it, you can read it, you can see what it is all about without having to pay the $25 to the village for, for you.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
Through Facebook.
Through Facebook. Rizzo Landfill Forum Discussion.
There's also Citizens for a Better New Haven.
Yes.
Many documents.
The third question was, can they do anything without approval of our, of our authority there?
At this point, I'm not prepared to come to a conclusion on that, but I do know that they do have to get approvals from other layers of government as well, such as the county and the state. Not what they want to do. As far as the township, though, I'm not prepared to, to get into that at this point.
It's the State Environmental Protection Agency that has not okayed it because of a lot of factors surrounding it. But as a lawyer, I think that one of the clauses in there is very interesting where it says that once they have the property, you are not allowed to look at their profit and losses for their business. And I thought that was a very interesting clause in that contract because of the fact that their profits in their business is going, would going to be your profits, but they don't want to see what they're making. They don't want you to see what their losses are. How would you really keep track of what you were even getting, saying this horrible, horrific, terrible, nasty thing would happen? Which I thought was an interesting clause. You are not allowed to look at their profit or losses. It says right in that 42-page document. So that's all I'm saying is that they're trying to look what you do. I mean, this is not us. And I thought was interesting, pay you 250 and you have three-quarters of the property and let you have, you know what I'm saying? The 250 and they have the 500. My, my understanding was the 500,000 was going to come off the top after they put in 500,000 yards or tons of yard waste. And after the third year, they would have a million and a half tons coming into there. And most of the tonnage would be in fact from Canada. I know, I lived in Fort Granger Township, and I was raised in the liquid disposal company, which is the worst 10 of the worst 10, how do you say, toxic waste sites in Michigan. And I lived there. We drank the water there. We breathed the air there. They had incinerators there. It was horrific. But you know what? Maybe the incinerators weren't as bad as what we still have at the foundry or had at the foundry. And I'm still would like to find out if they really did really get rid of all the toxic waste because it's a little late for us. That plant was already closed down for three years before the EPA even came in there and looked at it and were shocked at the tons of barrels and all kinds of pollution. And so the question is, how, if New Haven isn't going to be upboard on something like that, how are we going to even trust them for anything, any landfill, any kind of property, any kind of manufacturing that's going on in our city? One more time. One more time. This is my dear time and I'm out. You know, I was hoping that my husband would get here by now because he's read that document a couple of times. He's talked to a couple of attorneys and a couple of developers that were in New Haven previously. And we also talked to Ken Goiki, who is our representative. And everyone should call their representatives. They should call Mrs. LaFantine, Mr. Goiki, who is the other one, Ron Boe?
Just deal with basically Andrea Cantor.
At any rate, Ken received some information from Ken Goiki's office through his assistant that said that, and I don't want to panic everybody, but I think that's something that the attorney needs to find out for sure for us, is that the village is called a general election village. Is that true? Is that the...
You're thinking of the township. It's a general law township versus a charter township?
Well, they were, they were told that the village was a general law.
General law.
And that they could annex property from Lennox without your approval. I don't know whether that's true or not, but that's something we need to find out.
There, there are processes for annexing township properties by a general law village. And again, I don't want to come to any conclusions that the township wouldn't have any options if that were to come to fruition, if that became the direction that New Haven took. I do not want to come to any conclusions at this point that we would be completely defenseless here in the township. I would be looking into that and the board concerning that.
And I, and I hope you can appreciate, that's why we're being very cautious. We're making sure our attorney overlooks everything, all the information we get, plan to attend the meeting, gather that information, and do the best job we can and only put out factual information. Because like we said, we've heard a bunch of different things. We want to make sure that what we say to you is the truth and what we're looking at.
And all I'm trying to do is give you the information that we could have.
Yes, sir.
One thing to add, I mentioned the 425 agreement being mentioned in the host agreement that New Haven entered into. There is also discussion about annexation in that agreement as an alternative if there is no 425 agreement. So that is why I'm already exploring that and will be advising the board.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, I thought the village of New Haven wanted to be a good neighbor of the Lennox Township. This is being a good neighbor. I'll take a bad one.
Any other public comment?
One more. Ricky Ludeman, Frost Road. I just wanted to say, not to change the subject, I went to applaud our fire department for the fantastic dinner dance they put on again this year. It was wonderful. Thanks, guys. Pass the word. Anyone that wasn't there next year when they have it, I would like to see that place just booming out even more than it was.
You will be here next year.
Guys were great. And I want a little blow-up thing, little blow-up man. So I can let a Zarek in and out. I just wanted to say, as most people out here know, I was involved from day one when it used to be A&amp;E landfill started here, then after the whole mess that we went through. We fought and fought and fought. I think from that fight, when we went down to the Macomb County Community College and we had our commissioners sitting up there, so bored and so busy, walking off the stage and on the stage and back and forth and drinking their coffee. Am I right or wrong? Pardon me?
Checking their makeup.
Checking their makeup. Oh, yeah. Putting on makeup while we're on the stage. So those of us that had been in the fight from day one, we knew pretty much where this was going. Money had been paid, people were, let's just say, maybe they got their pockets filled and I don't know. But we got stuck with something over here. Thank God, in a way, where are they? There they are, back there. Waste management took over. They did start a citizens group. It was by invitation. There's a few of us from the area. When we do have concerns or our neighbors have concern and they contact us, we go to them with the problem. So far, do I like it being there? No. I live just down the road and they are now filling right at the end of my road. So yes, you do get odors, you get noise. I think I'm living right now in a construction zone because you hear the big machines in the morning, you hear them at night. Do I like it there? No. It kind of got rammed down our throat. And this is my opinion so that I can't get sued. I think money talks and, what is that saying? Money talks and...
Money talks.
...be something lost. Yes. And that's exactly the way it went. Hopefully, we can band together enough and stop these guys because what we're hearing, believe me, people, and the papers that you're seeing right now, that's nothing compared to what has already gone on. The board members, how I heard a rumor that they had only received those papers so many hours before that meeting, but yet they turned around and voted for it.
That's right.
So in my opinion, you're a gutless one to do something like that. The people that are around there now, that the rumor is, they knew that they were selling to a landfill. I'm here to tell you from a personal experience, but I know people there, they were not told that. The real estate came and made an offer to those people. It's not set in stone yet, but they did not say it was for a landfill because I know those people and they would never, ever have signed a paper for a landfill. So we're starting out underhanded. Everything is, that I've seen so far and I was at that meeting, it's all been underhanded. So we got to fight, people. I don't know what to tell you, but get ahold of those commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Also, just so the audience is aware too, the county executive was contacted by myself. He's aware of what's going on too, and he's in the same mood as we are. Basically, he's gathering all the information before he makes a determination on what steps the county will take. But he has had dialogue with me and regarded this matter. So before I shut down public comment, I'm giving everybody the last chance to speak. Any other public comment?
Does Rizzo Advocate have anything to say?
I can't answer that, sir. Sir, would you like to speak?
Yeah.
Please show proper respect just for everybody, like everybody else who's up there, please soon to get through this. Sir, go ahead. Sir, would you like to speak?
Yeah.
Please show respect just for everybody, like everybody else who's up there, please soon to get through this. Sir, go ahead.
I'm Greg Carpenter, a business representative for Rizzo. The only thing I can say is that everyone here is welcome Wednesday night to come to the neighborhood school to hear what Rizzo has to say regarding the proposed project. And everyone is welcome and a lot of questions hopefully will be answered that night. And I was here at the beginning to find creators. There's one person on the board I remember, I know well, Ms. Churchy. And Mickey, everyone else I don't know, it's been a long time.
It starts at six o'clock, Sheriff, sir?
It starts at six. Everyone, if you show up, just like the meeting last night at Merritt, so anyway, come a little early, there will be some pizza and things like that. So come out, have some to drink and eat. And then listen to what-
We don't want your food, we don't want your trash.
I do have a question, sir. Will there be a chance for the residents to ask any questions?
There will be a question and answer series. I think the questions are going to be, they'll be written questions, they're written down and we'll get straight answers that way. So I think there'll be a monitor, monitor from the village.
Moderator.
He will pick out the questions.
Oh.
It was the gentleman who was at the meeting last night.
Daniel.
I believe they're at his house, Mickey. It's a person who started the Citizens for a Better New Haven website, he lives in Amherst.
Well, ma'am, you can call us a point.
Just in fairness, the moderator is not somebody who represents the council at New Haven. He's a person who lives in Amherst, he's the one who started the Facebook page, Citizens for a Better New Haven. He is opposed to the landfill going in and he was the one who conducted the meeting last night at Merritt. So just, it seemed like everybody got the impression right away, because I'm definitely opposed to this, that it was somebody from the New Haven council moderating. It's not, so hopefully you'll have a fair chance to get your questions presented at the meeting. One quick comment too, about the money that they're talking, this other lady was talking about. New Haven would be paid a dollar a ton for the land, for the, what would go into the landfill. The $750,000 that we told last night is a one-time advance payment to New Haven. They have stated that they were going to set aside 250,000 of that to pay Lennox for their property. They would then not receive any other funds in payment until 750,000 tons, representing a dollar a ton, had been put into the landfill. And it was my understanding that they're anticipating at least 600,000 tons a year going into the landfill.
And just for clarification purposes too, this is not property that the township owns. These are private residences, private ownerships of proposed properties. So I don't want anybody to have the impression that this is township property as far as ownership. It lies within our boundaries, portion of it, so just for clarification.
Just out of curiosity, how hard is it for them to take property? I mean, you had-
Well, that's where Mr. Jobb just commented a little while ago. He's not prepared at this time to make a comment. He's going to gather all the information, attend the meeting, and once he sees everything, then we may be prepared to address. Once again, we've not been asked to make a decision on this and we're not going to help the process at this, at this point. We're not part of the process, other than gaining information. I guess I could say that fairly, correct, Mr. Jobb?
Yes.
But if there's any other questions, and sorry this is taking so long, but wanted to give everybody a chance to speak tonight and be heard and open to anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure. We're going to, I don't know if you want to stay, the rest of the meeting, anybody that wants to leave?
Nah.
I'll take a little bit of recess so the meeting's not interrupted.
Excuse me, before we do, we do get a link to make a comment.
Sure. And so, all members like to make a comment.
I have lived in the township since 1989. I've been involved with the planning commission and the board. Eighty-nine for the planning commission and I believe it was ninety-six to the board. I know a lot of you by face, by name, by neighbors. We're here to work together. I've been to other township meetings, other townships, and I know how you get to feel when you're in the audience and looking at us going, oh, they knew. Honest to God, crushed my heart. I was told third hand after the New Haven meeting, my mouth hit the floor and I had no idea. So I can honestly say that we were not privy to any of this beforehand. I mean, you can call me a politician and say I knew, but I swear to God, I didn't. So, and we will try to work together because we are one community, New Haven and Lennox. Thank you.
And just to expand on that too, a lot of times, and not defending anybody else, but when companies come into areas, they have certain disclosures, certain guarantees that people they're trying to do business with don't disclose because of rise in property values of them trying to take purchase. So a lot of times, a lot of people aren't privileged to that information or give that information out. And in this case, I can surely agree with Mr. Church, no one knew nothing, they kept it very hush hush. So. Trustee Boyd?
Yeah, absolutely. I can tell you that if I wasn't sitting up here, I'd be sitting up there with you and I'd be just as furious as you are. And to answer, I think it was your question, they could offer me $2 million, it wouldn't matter. It would not matter. We already dealt with getting one forced down our throats before me, before I even lived in the village or in the township. But I'm with you guys. This is just not necessary. So rest assured of that.
There's Ron Becker.
I've been here 25 years. I was here when Peggy Hymas and the former board fought the landfill that we had, and it's true, we fought. We had to end up putting a special tax on Lennox Township residents to help pay for the attorney fees and all the fees that we got stuck with at the time. I was not on the board at that time, but I know what they went through through working with Peggy as her pipping. I know this board has gotten blamed. I saw some of the things Facebook and that saying that we didn't know this and that this is just another example of what we had. None of us were on this board when the other landfill came in. So we're kind of getting blamed for something that we really fought in. I knew nothing about it until, I have been in and out of the hospital in the past month, so I haven't been in touch with everybody. But I found out just like everyone else on this board, the morning after the meeting when the phone calls started coming, I knew nothing about this at all. And I will fight with you because we've been through it before. I have been on this board with an Act 425 with the other communities next to us. So I've had some experience, so I definitely will help you fight for it.
Thank you.
I have to agree with both Chris and Karen. I got the first phone call at six o'clock in the morning and was completely in shock. The second phone call came sooner after that and then I texted the attorney and said, story's still coming in, don't know it all, but I need to talk to you tomorrow because maybe I'll know more of it by then. That was the first clue that we had about this. It was, as Ron said, the biggest secret New Haven has ever kept. We have said for years, those of us that have been here for years, have said that we would give all the money back to that hill if it wasn't there. And we'd rather be struggling like a lot of the other townships are as opposed to having that in our neighborhoods. So the township, the village definitely doesn't need none.
Any other public comment? Last chance.
Yes.
Real quick, thank you.
Seriously, at that meeting, I was at that meeting the night that they voted on that. And I don't know legal law or anything, but I certainly have attended these meetings for 40 years now. I was a little confused because that was not an agenda item. And I kept the agenda, I have that agenda. It was not an agenda item. The board members were up there, these guys were sitting out here, got up, presented whatever had came out of their mouth, and then they voted on it. Is that a legal way of doing something? As to the people that didn't know? I don't know. I heard, again, this is a rumor, that some of the board members only got their paperwork a few hours before that. Now, if that's true, that's pretty darn sad. And if that's the way they operate now, God help us if we don't win this one. So we got to fight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just to clarify that, one kind of helping on the agenda, we were told that the New Haven attorney recommended that they listed on the agenda as a community development project.
That's what we're calling it. Hacking on New Haven.
Hacking on New Haven, yes. That's how they spell landfill.
Like we said, we had no knowledge and we have no control over that here.
Well, then we were told by the sheriff's department that if we made any noise, that they were going to call the sheriffs in and-
And they did.
They did?
They did.
That was ridiculous.
And he sat there and looked at us like, what do you want me to do?
So we appreciate what you've done tonight.
Thank you very much.
Just so you guys realize, I've been on the board only a few months now, several months now, but I've been coming to meetings too, like meeting forever. And when these guys knew the agenda before I was on here, what's written on the agenda, that's what we're talking about. We'll never see anything given, so watch for our agendas. If something from a landfill comes up, you'll know it. It'll be on there.
That's why I can assure you, we're not going to discuss any more landfill business after I discuss this right now. So, I want to watch and leave.
Are your-
Yes, ma'am. If you have a public comment, please come up to the podium.
Are your agendas listed on, before the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm from New Haven.
Can you come up to the podium, please? Thank you. Will you stick your name for the record?
Maryland Cake, I'm from New Haven. And for a community that tables everything. Every meeting, they table it. They can't make up their mind whether they should even pay their bills. But this meeting that they had last month on Tuesday, in 12 minutes from the time they talked, Mr. Rizzo and his attorney joked, it was kind of, very lightly. They discussed it for 12 minutes and five of them voted for it. That's sick.
Just a question.
Mr. Drake, please.
Just a question.
Come on up. I got to treat everybody to the scene.
They need me to go up for us.
Thank you, sir.
I had not-
Pull up, mic up.
I had not intended to, I came to listen and I had not intended to have anything to say about, I appreciate everybody thinking about the site and I'm agreeing with you. I oppose, I am opposed. But my real question was, Ron, are we live on TV?
We're not live, sir, taped.
We're taped and is this, are these, are you meetings broadcast now?
Yes, they are. Actually, you can watch them on YouTube and also too on channel 12, I believe, through the NEMC or Six, eight, twelve, six, they're available on YouTube. As well as the other public one.
Available on YouTube.
Do you know the schedule?
It's posted on a bulletin board. If you watch the channel, it's all posted on there.
I can tell you, I can tell you this too, on the east side of Gresham, we don't get that channel, but on the other side, again, if you can, YouTube always has it.
Okay, YouTube, how do you access this on YouTube?
Go to YouTube, go to Lennox Township Board and Trustees meeting.
Okay.
And it'll show you actually all the ones that we've been taped up to this point.
Okay. And the only other comment that I would make is that in last week's voice, there was a court, there was an article in there by Courtney Flynn, I don't know how many of you actually read it, I think it was last week, and she did kind of an editorial on the, you know, the landfill or garbage in general. And it was kind of interesting because the point that she was making is that we wouldn't have any of this problem if we were, or at least the problem of dealing with garbage would not be nearly as big if we all took a little bit more responsibility for our own garbage. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Last call. Okay, any public comment?
I'd like to take a five minute break. I make a motion and then we take a five minute break.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Kirkkey.
Open the meeting at 10 minutes to nine.
Motion by Clerk Key, supported by Trustee Boyd. Other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Five.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from 6,006, 3, 2013, 6,19, 2013, and 6,26, 2013. Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Ann Becker. Other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion passes. Sheriff's report. Do not have the latest report. We're still quite a bit behind on the reports. Department of Labor report.
Receive and file, please.
Thank you, Chief. If anybody has any questions after state of receiving file, please let me know. EMS report. Mr. White, he did say receiving file earlier, he did leave. Thank you. No, I were waiting for him to come up too. I do want to apologize for everybody letting go a little bit longer than normal with the public comments, but it was something I think we needed to hear tonight. So I apologize for everybody else waiting for their normal business. Sir?
Good evening, every board, foremember, senior, copying my report from the month. At this time, I request that you just receive the file unless anybody has any questions. I'd be more than happy to answer.
Cameron, so you got in here replacing the parking rail, that's the one we talked about?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Replacing the parking rail, actually, you had that out there, is that the one we were talking about?
Yes, correct. I was unaware of what was going on on that rail until you brought it to my attention. Went out there, looked at it. There's really no true way of trying to repair that. Of course, you know, those rails were bought 20 years ago, I'm sorry, 12 years ago. So it took me a little while to research, so I did have to redo the mounting core. I found a couple online. I also found the original company that we purchased the equipment through, they have submitted their quotes. Alls I have to do is make a selection of where we're going to purchase because of cost.
Was it only one? That needed to be redesigned? Just one?
Yeah, everything, all the other ones are in good shape. Actually, the way that was rusted through, it was really kind of, it took me a couple minutes to find it just because of the way it's rusted through. It's not real obvious.
Thank you. Any more questions? Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Code enforcement report.
See and file, and I did get the inspection forms from Shannon.
Thank you. Assessing Department report. Thank you for staying.
Good evening. I just wanted to take a few moments and introduce myself. I'm Tom Monchek, the new assessor.
Oh, my, go closer, please.
Tom Monchek is my name, I'm the new assessor, started here July, or June 3rd, and I just wanted to introduce myself, and if you have any questions? If not, please receive the report and file.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions?
And just 'cause Tom didn't mention it, he does work for assessing, for the company that...
Yes, Assessment and Administration Services.
And you're, you're going to, Tom, do the same thing that we saw, which did for us each month? Tell us in on what's happened and what TTs are going on with it?
Right.
Okay.
Engineers report. Mr. Saif.
Good evening. I believe all of you received my status report. One comment on the sanitary sewer mess plant. I have a report finalized today, and a hard copy will be handed to supervisor's office. If anyone else would like a hard copy, I'm only glad to produce one, deliver it to you. This started last, last year, just to give you two second brief. And we're on hold because of the county request on the ultimate capacity request, and we finalized that about a couple of months ago, meeting with the county, and this document is, is final right now. So, any other questions regarding this, or any items on my report, I'll stay there, otherwise, I'll request that receive and file, please.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Library report. Sure, my, that takes care of this email, then, for our copy. Senior Center report.
Please see and file, unless you have questions.
Anybody have any questions for senior coordinator?
Did we talk about the requests later, later on?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I really didn't understand it, so we'll get to that one. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Chief President report. I can report at this time also that I've had conversations with Sheriff Fugersham, and one of our deputies, Deputy Corey, and can tell you that Duffin working out a solution to our out-of-area car situation, to where we're covered almost 100% of the time, and that's our goal, is 100% coverage for the 24/7, and looking very good, I'm very happy with the effort that they put forth, and the way they're, they're working this out. So that's one of our concerns, that's been on my radar, and the deputies are doing a great job. Thank you. Treasurer report.
Each have two of them for the month of May and June. I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report for May and June 2013.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Orders and bills.
And you have several pages there because of the prepaid, and because of no July meeting, so that's why you've got so many different... Any questions on Kathy Sears, she can explain what's been going on. I got bills in front of me, if you wanna... What are the two totals we have to approve? Different pages with different ones. The 431, and then there's one at 118, and a 207.
Yeah, could you make it down for a moment? Would you like it?
Yeah, I didn't know which one was the correct total we had to approve, and per month, or whatever. Jody can answer. I mean, I don't have any questions on the bills, I just wanna make sure I mentioned the right...
Most pages, prepaid and not totals, are on the one that was run just prior to the meeting. This is...
Probably want to do it as an individual monthly portion with the total?
Yeah, I just wanna know what the total I'm looking at.
Total on the actual ones that are not prepaid is $421,306.36.
421, I believe, did you say?
421, 306, and 36 cents.
And that's for June, or that's the prepaid?
And the rest were prepaid.
Anything that has a check number alongside it, needs to be paid them, so that nothing, probably nothing that, you know, late phase or anything on. So that, just the total, then, is that 421 that we have to approve, or we have another amount to approve?
It's for this one that says for approval at the regular board meeting. Now, on that, it says 431, 1062. 62, and that's including the blue cross, blue shield, that usually, that comes out of the payroll fund, if it doesn't come out of the dispersment.
Okay. And then the June bill one, is that included in that total? Okay.
And I guess that's gonna be a micro struggle. These all together is one, one payment?
Your, your approving prepaid's as presented?
The 118, though.
The ones that are approved tonight are the ones that were just run on Saturday, so sometimes there's a difference between what you got on Wednesday.
So it's the 118, the 113.
The 118 is written the way it's supposed to be. We got 118, 113, .42. That's for the prepaid.
It's actually every page is, this is prepaid, it's $270,000. This is prepaid, because we didn't have a, a meeting last month.
Okay, so just approved the 431, or 421 as a whole?
Yep.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the orders and bills for June and July, a total of 421,306, and 36 cents.
Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Other questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk Roca, please.
Churchy?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Anbacher?
Aye.
Key?
Aye.
Trump.
Aye. Motion carries. Sorry about that, it was two months' worth. It was a lot.
I just wanted to mention that very quickly.
Trustees report. Trustee Churchy.
Okay, at the planning commission level, not a whole lot going on, of course, but we did, we're still talking about the red plan. Couple things that we did mention to possibly work into the, you know, five-year extended plan. We talked about looking at area for a park in the northwest section. There's nothing out that way. We have the park here, and New Haven's got a park, and there's Ridge, and there's nothing out that way. Also, another thing that we talked a little bit about was possibly looking into one of those splash parks. Those are very popular now, since we have city water here. It's something to look at. My other comment is, I just got back from my trip with the Water Warriors. We spent all year raising money through specialists from Michigan. We ride our jet skis from Macanau City down to St. Clair Shore, well, down to Harrison Island now, in five days. I'm fairly proud to announce that last year, we had, we raised 65,000. As of right now, we're at 85,000, and that all the list is special. You know, if you wanna donate, please do. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd?
The only thing I have is, Mickey said it earlier, but I wanted to thank the fire department, they put down their stakeout, the first one I've been to in about six or seven years, because I'm always out of town when they do it, and it was a really good time. One of the persons, one of the people that was with me, won a Kindle, so I mean, they had good prizes there, TVs, it was a really good time. It's a great fundraiser for them, gave to a lot of charities, so like Mickey said, next year, make sure you come on by.
Thanks.
Awesome. Don't ask. Thank you.
It was talked about, the meeting on Wednesday at 6 o'clock at the Endeavour Middle School. For those that don't know where it is, it's on 26th between Indian Trail and North Avenue, I'm sorry, Indian Trail, North Avenue, and Carden Res. is where it's at, in case you're not familiar with the area. Also, Rural Cellar Florist is having a downtown community event this coming Saturday, August 10th, from noon to 8:00 p.m. There's gonna be live music, foods, arts and crafts, car show, vendor space, and I think I heard you say 40, did you have 40? Bender?
In a beer.
Oh, I'm sorry, she said in a beer.
So everybody come out and...
I'm checking, I need...
Come out and have fun at the, this event. I went last year, I didn't get to stay very long because I had a wedding today, and I went through the baskets, and I felt so bad, because I, I didn't know until I got home, I had a message on the machine, and I thought, if I'd have known that, I would have told her, given this completely. Anyway, so come out today. We do not have an election tomorrow, that's the first in quite a long time that we don't have an August election. So that's kind of a good thing. And any, as they have said, the stakeout, sorry I couldn't be there this year, 80th of family members, 80th birthday party took place.
We got your donations, and thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at this June bills paid for July, because the last page, the first two items on it is, here are consultants, you paid out $854 to McDonald's, and also right underneath it is that here are consultants invested 20, what is it, $2,500 for landfill, PTA landfill? You know what's going with that stuff?
That's PTS pine tree acres.
Okay. So that's a landfill that already exists?
Correct.
And then it's the money that you paid down, or they paid you, I don't understand. What is this one about?
One second, ma'am. Coming up.
Sir Redsafe, I'm the engineer, working for young consultants, and we are township engineers under contract with the township. The pine tree acres visit a quarterly report, that is paid by the landfill, it's under the host agreement, for the township engineer to go out and investigate the site every four months. So it's not, not money coming out of the township, it's actually pine tree acres paying for that.
And $854 of McDonald's?
McDonald's, they are submitting engineering plans, and we review that, and that's again, paid by the McDonald's. We build the township because we work for the township, and in, in return, the township builds back the advocate, which in this case is McDonald's.
The McDonald's in question on this one is a 26-mile road in the Bay River, Bright Meyer.
In Melton.
So it's a new build, and like he said...
He's there for $800.
A lot of burgers. A lot of rags. It's about burgers for a year.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are our moms paid to here on consultant.
The other fee that he's talking about is for them to watch our back at the landfill in coordination, make sure everything's up to snuff, which the landfill pays for, so thank you. Okay, any more motion?
Make a motion that we receive and file all of the different reports.
Support.
Thank you. Motion by Clerk Key, supported by Treasurer Anbacher. Other discussion or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Thank you. Unfinished business. Township Office North Entrance Lock Request.
I'm happy to report that this can be removed from the agenda. The lock has now been reprogrammed. I had a meeting this past Friday with one programmer from ATT, and he walked me through it, and we got that taken care of.
Thank you.
On the new program, he said we will continue to be locked out of the program when there are updates, but he told me the next time it happens to give him a call, and perhaps he would be able to do it without us replacing the program, so we're gonna see how that goes. And trying to get the Winnipeg program from another source, I contacted two different places, neither one of them gave me a quote, and the one man said it's proprietary to Tyro, and so they didn't put in touch with the technical. So this item can be removed. I'd like to make a motion to remove Township Office North Entrance Lock Request from this and all of future meetings.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Key, supported by Treasurer Anbacher. Other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Thank you. Before any further, Mr. White, I did receive and file your report, you had nothing else, correct, sir? Thank you. Meeting room sound system improvement proposal.
Premier Sound Communications provided a second proposal with the, the different mics that, actually, these go over here, as opposed to clipping, so that the mic would be right there. We still have the other quotes from the other two companies that we've gotten prices from, and so this is just a follow-up on that.
Is there a way of trying that out before we would commit to something like it, especially it's a new device, or?
We might be able to try out that with, with the equipment we already have, but some of the other stuff he's going to replace, you know, he's gonna replace a mixer in there, and a processor, you know, so there's some other things, I, I wouldn't expect him to wanna come and put all that in.
I understand.
But if, if you wanna hold off another month, then I'll have them. We have to replace the mics because of the FCC.
Correct. I, I don't think we need to hold off, we're just, if we're switching the style, that's all I'm getting at, is make sure it works properly.
I can talk to him.
I'm, is there, is it the mic connected to a box like this?
I'm sure it would have.
Okay, is there on, off, like, you know, because we cough, or we cough, or something? So you, 'cause can't tell by the headpiece?
Yeah, I would say it would have to be connected to a box. Yeah, I would say it would have to be connected to a box, because there's no, there's no controls on the head side.
Okay. I don't want to sneeze.
No, it needs to be done, I agree.
He still came in the other, the other two companies.
Basically, so everybody knows, I guess our frequency is illegal, correct?
The FCC, the frequency is, is no longer available. It was taken over by HDTV.
So we're looking for a motion to table this until we get, see if we can get a sample on the
I can call this one out.
Maybe one, one or two to use next meeting, see how they work.
I mean, I guess it comes down to the style of microphone, it's the only thing that we'd have in dispute right now, but the other stuff definitely has to be done, so.
Right, so we could, we could approve the rest, the whole, we could approve the whole thing with the microphones being based on whether or not we'd like a microphone.
Yeah, because the rest still has to be done.
Because the first two, the first two items are the microphones, the first two buying items.
There's a picture in there too, if everybody's seen it originally.
The rest of the stuff is hardware for the REG.
I don't have the stuff, the information in front of me, because I didn't know where to move this fast, I don't, do you have a price, do you have information that has prices?
I'm listening.
Here we are, oh, I'm sorry, but is this contract?
I don't know, I don't know if we're able to think of that, so if we might have detail, we can work out if there's issues with the microphone.
So each one of these microphones has five hundred seventy-seven dollars?
Yep.
I just want everybody to know too, that some of the bids we got were anywhere from seventeen thousand, there's one for eighty-six hundred, this one's for just under seventy-five hundred, and it's the company we use now, but like was it explained, we have to change the frequency because of the FCC regulations and everything. So it's nothing that we're spending frivolously because we want new mics.
I guess I'll be the devil's advocate here and just flat out say it, and the only thing that worries me about these is sharing these microphones in each other's ears. I know for the price, five hundred seventy-seven dollars
Well, I'm proud of that also, I think they should be dedicated to each individual.
You only need more than seven though, you would need one for every board that sits up here, planning commission, they all need their own, that can get awfully expensive.
Yeah, but it's no different than these.
Except these aren't in my ear, warming up.
I totally proud of that also, yeah.
Unless it's, we have to check with the company to see how to cleanse them, you know, maybe there's, the wipes, and also the wipes isn't going to damage the complent, and stuff like that, so.
Would you like to approve, approve your sound with the actual microphones still up in the area, have him show us everything he's got?
The options, will, will the rest of this stuff work with the microphones we have now, if we go ahead and get this stuff done and hold off on the microphones themselves?
No.
I don't think so.
That's right.
That's the problem, is that it all kind of works together.
Okay. We can hold off for a month, we waited this long.
I'd like to look into something different, just for the microphones, just for that reason. I'll make a motion to table this until we look into other options, more microphones, or cleaning out these particular ones that have been in there.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by treasurer Hattbacher. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? New business, Monix Township Fire Department, new hire request. Thank you for waiting, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ron. About a month and a half ago, I sent the board an email regarding the rehiring of Brian Decker. Brian was with us up until a year ago, and he moved out of the community with his dad, and since then, he has found his own place to live, actually downtown Richmond, which is allowed under our policies and procedures, so it's a formality that the board approves his formal rehire at this time, so I'm requesting that you approve the rehire of Brian Decker, welcoming back to the fire department.
Thank you, Chief.
Do we refer to it as rehire, or just authorized hiring? Is there a difference in status?
My opinion, unless Steve has something to say on it, I don't think the language matters either way.
Well, I guess the, I guess the question would be, is when his five years would, from this time or from the first time? There's a, there's a range.
Oh, you're talking about wage scale? I would recommend totality of his employment from prior and from this date on, that once he reaches his five years, that of the total accumulated time, that's when he would get his pay raise, not from five years from today. That would be my recommendation, a request, actually.
That's why I was questioning the hire, that's because a good hire list
Okay.
Let's say if he worked two years before
He did three years.
He reaches his five years in three years. Okay.
Well, at this time, typically something like this is governed by the employee policy manual, which is currently being worked on by the board, so if you do make a decision in that regard, and I would suggest that you do include that as part of your motion, but your motion should also include a stipulation that is subject to modification by any future employee handbook that modifies that.
The only, the only thing that worries me about that, and I'll use myself as an example, I was on for ten years, I'm gone for ten years, I come back, I still have ten years seniority in pay scale, that's, not that I don't want to get your two years, I have love for that, but we're setting residents, and that's the only thing that makes me nervous. I'm not for more deaths.
If, if we were, if there was a, a dollar difference between the pay rates, three dollars, five dollars, ten dollars, we are talking, don't quote me, but I believe it's a fifty cents difference, fifty cent an hour difference between a five-year employee and a one-year, and a new employee, so we're talking minimal amount, so that's, that's up to you.
Kind of make you feel a little better.
And the fact I'm proud that Brian's come back.
Absolutely.
I'm not welcome to be bad.
Well, you know, it speaks volumes for the fire department, because he moved to Richmond, which I understand is within the one mile, he could have went to Richmond Fire, chose to come back here. That speaks, that says something for his fire. I appreciate that, too.
I'll make a motion that we allow the Lantstown Fire Department to rehire Brian Decker, to resume his standing time already with the department.
Motion by trustee Church, supported by clerk Keith. No questions, discussion? Ma'am, do you have a question?
Yeah, make sure that he bridges his time.
Pardon?
Make sure he bridges it, that he gets credit.
Alright, thank you. I know you raised your hand, I wanted to make sure it was better. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, you did all receive my other, my email, your yard in the other camp, thank you very much.
Everybody should have received a letter from me indicating a class for Wesley Green, our full-time employee at the DPW. A few weeks ago, I received notification from the DEQ that they would be holding an operation and maintenance class. This class touches on every aspect of the waterwork system. This class would get him ready, prepare him to take the exam to achieve certification, which is our ultimate goal, is having a second employee that's certified to operate the water system. So unfortunately, this time, at this time, and as of today, I still have not been able to get a timeframe or a solid price for the class from the DEQ. Early indications, I don't, I don't foresee this class to exceed the five hundred dollars, so at this time, I would ask if I could get preapproval for five hundred dollars to send Wesley to this class.
This was something that was kind of stipulated when Wesley was hired, in that he would go and get his certification unless
Yes.
Kim was talking about it earlier in the week, and said it was going to be mid-August, so I said you better get it on the agenda, even though we don't know the exact price. Also, this, Wesley is, is your backup for anything water sewer?
Correct. Yeah, if, if for some reason I'm unavailable, or out of the area, and a problem arises, yes, I would have to rely on Wesley to respond to it. So obviously, it's in, it's in probably the township's best interest, but my own, to further his education and get him up to speed, you know, working to our system as soon as possible.
And I talked to you a little bit about this the other day, just so, you know, everybody feels better about this, I know originally when we hired him, he was talking about going to college, and maybe not hanging out so long, and now he's, it looks like he, and I know we can't say he'll be here for twenty years, because we just don't know, but as it looks right now, he does plan on staying out for a while, so this, I think this training is pretty important, but help motivate him to keep him here, too.
Oh, definitely. Makes it a more versatile.
Most of my comment here, I was just going to say, ask you how he's doing, and do you feel he's going to stick around to make it worth while to go through this class?
Obviously, I cannot speak for Wesley, I have no idea what his future plans are, or what they may hold. As of today, I'm unaware of any changes in his current status, so for me to say anything different, I really couldn't comment.
With this, are we also, do we also, if they don't stay for a certain amount of time?
Yeah, that's what I was just saying.
We do have a stip, there is a stipulation that I believe any, any education that is paid out by the township would have to be refunded if the employee were to leave within a set time period.
Two years.
Yeah, two or five years, something like that.
He would have to pay back a portion of
Correct.
That's, I think we've set it up with the firefighters.
I believe everybody, yeah.
Yeah, I don't
As far as how Wesley's doing, I, you know, I, you know, I wouldn't, both Wesley and Pat have done outstanding jobs here, they've been really working their butts off to, to keep the place looking nice, and just try and knock out the projects as best we can, especially with some of the inclement weather that we've gone through, we've had some early wet weeks.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the class for Wes Green for the DEQ, not to exceed five hundred dollars?
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by clerk Keith. No questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, as the information comes about, pass along the word.
Stay right there, sir. Former township building discussion. Everybody have a copy of the diagram that Kim presented?
Kim, I agree with everything that you talked about, with the taking down of the walls inside the old building. Is this something that we could actually get a vote for outside of doing it in the house?
I'm sure.
Just to see, just to see if being done faster, you know, as opposed to stretching out would be less expensive for us?
Oh yeah, there's definitely companies out there that, that can do that.
And you were saying you probably wouldn't get to it till fall anyways, when you're done with the grass stuff, so you actually have time to get a call.
Yeah, for obvious reasons, you know, projects that are already in motion, and things to wrap up at the end of the seasons, you know, that project would kind of just be ongoing, and then once we got to the fall part, then we would really be able to concentrate to finalize it. But, you know, it'd take me, all I can say is I can do my best to try and be some close before the next quarter.
Well, we're thinking about it, too, I mean, I've done a lot of thinking about it since you've talked to me, too, and I would like to see, as much as I love that building, and that's where I started my time here with it, I'm wondering if we are throwing our money away here by trying to save this building, is there a way to possibly get a bid on what it would be to take the building right now? Do both, find out what is feasible to do, what we're planning to do.
Oh yeah, I can definitely easy, because the companies that would get quotes from would be able to do either or, but there would be other aspects to a total demolition and
Yeah, problem.
Because of our
I realize that you're online, and the electrical and all of that, but with all that considered, I'm wondering if we're shooting ourselves with what you're, spend a lot of money that maybe this isn't a more couple than you want to anyway. So can we put that in there, can we find out both ways, what it would entail?
Sure, to make it, so we, so we're, so we understand all the aspects.
Yeah.
I'll see, you know, I'll do my best to try and get electrical costs, you know, if that building were to come down, what would need to be done to revitalize?
Right. Okay.
The motion, Glenn?
Yeah, I make a motion that we have Kim check into getting bids on the old building, on totally tearing it down, and then also on doing the removal of the walls, just proposed to us in this round, and hopefully you can have it for the next meeting.
So you want a removal and build bid, and a demolition bid, correct?
Correct.
Support.
Motion by treasurer Hattbacher, supported by trustee Boyd. No questions or discussion?
Other question?
Is this still regards to turning that building part of a garage for a town car?
Storage and garage.
Yeah.
There's a couple of different options out there, but this is just looking at everything.
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you. Go up, Kim Stifter. Did you get, did you get one?
Casco Township, Monix Township, streetlights cautionary request.
This stuff's from a meeting with the supervisor of Casco Township, supervisor Rummanam, informing us that we have shared locations of streetlights that they pay for on their side of the road that we gain use from, and would like to share the cost with them on this lighting, on some of our boundary roads, like County Line, and Kim, we also asked you to check some perimeter roads that vice versa, we might have lights that they're sharing also to, in an expense. Basically, for the year, if we were to share a payment of the lights that affect our neighboring communities with us, our cost would be three hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents, and as it stands, I think that's a small price to pay, we're not having to pay for a hundred percent of the lighting, where both residents of our community gain the use and they're sold, it's basically a fifty-fifty scenario, which personally, I think is very fair to benefit everybody, the safety and the health of our entire community.
I actually, by the way, with this also, I make a motion that we approve the payment of, you know, these of, you know, these set prices?
That's, this is the prices that we have that are set per month as we speak.
Because...
Believe those prices were what they're paying going to DTE, they ended up attached to their bill just like we received.
Well, I assume we're only going to pay it once a year?
Yeah, that would probably be something that we'd work out between them, whether they might, you know, twice a year or once a year, because they're involved, I would just suggest...
I just don't want to use, I don't want to use this price. I mean, I can say what that is, but it says that the one light, they would like us to pay a quarter of the bill, and then the other three lights, they'd like us to pay a half. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the copayment to the township of Casco for one quarter of the one light and one half of the three lights going forward. This year, it would cost us $347.67.
Support. Motion by clerk Keat, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions?
Um, the other question, I think you kind of touched on it, um, do we share lights with, like, Richmond Township, and, I mean, is this something we can look into also?
That's the other, the other evidence we're looking at, yeah.
Okay.
Just so everybody knows too, no question of the quarters, I believe based on the intersection costs, multiple communities, we're only going to pay for our percentage of usage where these lights, the other 50% ones are the ones where it's split between the two communities.
And some people may ask why all of a sudden they come up with this, um, Cam knows, what was it, a year ago, two years ago?
I should think it was three.
Yeah, that we discovered, we, Lennox Township was paying for a light in the city of Britishmind, and we were also paying for lights in the village of New Haven for years, and we didn't realize it. I had Cam go out and they checked everything out, and yes, that was happening, and what they ended up doing, DTE, who said they couldn't move all the way back, because we had done this all those years, but they did give us the credit.
The credit.
On it, and then took those off, so that we're not being charged for them anymore. But, you know, these things happen, I mean, and really, you don't stop thinking that, like, theirs servicing well, full township, you know, so I totally agree that this doesn't sound like a bad...
It's very, it's very fair and very reasonable, and it's a safety issue for our residents, so. I think everybody likes to see the streetlights. Right?
That was all, I had every question.
Okay, you made the mo, you already made the motion, yeah. It's supported. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Thank you. You can sit down now. Lennox Township Senior Center request. Thank you. If you could, I'll pull the microphone down, please.
I got an English teacher once tell me to stand up behind the podium, but I already was, but, okay. Um, I just had a couple of budget requests, I think that everybody probably got me notes probably thoroughly confused because I was doing it really fast, but first item, I wanted to request the withdrawal of $100 from the transportation budget to be put into a petty cash fund, and this would allow me to pay cash when we use the Smart Shuttle service for our senior trips. It costs $2 per person to ride the Smart Shuttle bus, so when I use the shuttle service to take the seniors anywhere, um, I have to be able to pay that $2 out of someplace. So I was just requesting petty cash of $100 so that cash would be on hand to pay the shuttle service. That was the first item of my request.
And stop her there, and accounting wise, there's no problem with that. She would keep track of how much she paid on which trip, and she would get, there would always be $100 in this petty cash, so if she spent $48 on a trip, she would hand in a voucher for, you know, 24 people went on this trip, it costs $48, and she would get, it would be reimbursed out of the funds that we've already approved for her account.
Does it get re, refunded by what the riders are paying here?
Not necessarily, because these are...
No, we're paying for it.
We're paying for it, it just, its cost is $2, but we don't charge the people $2.
That's correct.
We already approved an amount for transportation at the last meeting, and...
So that's number eight.
Correct. Item B would be that to set up an account that would allow us to receive funds in for trips. Um, occasionally we have trips, like casino trips, that we charge $25 to go on, and then when the people, when the people get to the casino, they receive that $25 back, so it's a net of zero to them, but it helps us pay the transportation costs. And right now, I have no way of receiving money cash in, so if there was an account set up that was directly seniors, then we could know what cash is coming into the senior department.
And what she would actually like, and I need to speak to Paul Bailey about exactly how he thinks it should be set up, it could be a line item within the, um, the general ledger now that is separate fund from everything else, so that she always knows how much she's making on those type of trips.
This, this is the one, Luanne and I talked on the phone for about 45 minutes about just these three things, because I had a lot of concerns, and she answered all of them. My, one of my biggest concerns was with this, if we're not giving the seniors the $25, would someone not be able to go? And that's not even an issue, because you've already used this, you've done it this way with them, nobody has an issue with it, they've all, they're still filling the bus up, it's already been done this way, it all zeros out, it's, you explained it to me very well, and made me feel a lot of that.
The point is, on casino trip, we actually have the potential to make money for the senior department to be used for other activities, because the bus would actually cost us $800. If I have 32 seniors going at $25 apiece, that pays for the bus, so any seniors attending over that 32, we get $25 from them. That would go into the senior fund to help fund other trips. So that, it's just a way to account for the money. Right now, I do it in Ray Township, I love the opportunity to make the same, to have the same thing happen here, that one trip, Ray Township could benefit from the overages, and the next trip, Lennox Township seniors could benefit from the overages.
They get a direct benefit from paying.
Correct.
Plus they're vested in paying, so they show up.
That is the other issue. I've had, uh, two trips in the end of July, in the first part of August, that I lost $75 on, because seniors told me they were coming, and I bought their tickets, and then they didn't show.
Yeah, also, just to reiterate on that too, I do have a problem with that. If you document funds like that, and it happens to have to come out of your pocket, I want you to make sure that you turn that in, document it, because you should be reimbursed for that, due to somebody not fulfilling their, their promise of going, so.
So, um, that, that's the other part of it, is that this way, we can collect the money upfront, they're paid, and they have invested interest in that trip, and they're not just saying, well, it didn't cost me anything, so here it is, Thursday morning, I just decided I'm not going, when a ticket has already been purchased for them.
And you're thinking the best way to keep track of this is every other single trip would be for the Lennox Township's fund, is really the only way to do it?
Correct. And currently, my goal is to run one casino trip a month, so every other month, Lennox Township seniors would be benefiting from any overages from a casino trip.
Are, are you saying that our township is going to sponsor one month?
Yes, no, one, every other month.
Okay.
Yes, every other month. And then the last item that I had in, um, is that with the debit card, we receive $750 to fund the senior program every three months, and if there's overages on that card, I'm only reimbursed the amount that brings the card back up to the $750, which, blimey, it's wonderful to have that available for the seniors. Um, however, I would like to see us be able to give the seniors a big party with entertainment, those types of things, maybe once a year. I cannot do that all out of one quarter's funds. So what I'm asking is, if I had $100 left over in the first quarter, if that could somehow be set aside, so that at some point during the year, I could fund that party with the money that, that is there, I need to be able to save a little bit at a time to do a big event. I can't spend a whole quarter's allotment on one big event and have nothing else for them the rest of the time.
Well, you want to roll over, it does make sense to suspend it because you have to.
Correct.
So Cam, right now, or whoever would answer this one, the $750, they're budgeting that, it's, that's for the year?
Yeah, she's, she's pretty much using the $750, you know, anyway, so it's, it's not costing us anything more. In fact, let's say if she had 100 left, if she put it into this account or this line item that we're setting up in B, you know, she'd still only be working with the $750.
Right.
And the 100 would be set aside, like she said, so whenever she wanted to.
Slash one.
Yes.
So I agreed with everything that she had on here, um, there was a couple of things I wanted to ask Paul about during the audit, and that's like over when we get to the audit, and his people are in here, I'll talk to them about what's best way, what do you want to do?
Just gonna say, whether Steve, Steve's sitting there nodding his head, we're talking casino money, boss. Or what, you know?
None of the township needs to be used to casino.
Well, that is correct, that's one thing that, that's why we charge...
Make that perfectly clear.
The reason we charge for the casino trips is so that none of the township funds are being used for casinos. I don't want it to ever look like the township is paying for somebody's gambling hat. The seniors love casino trips, however, they have to pay for them.
Attorney Jop, and that's a very good thing, and, and, ma'am clerk, what you indicated about going to the auditor about this is exactly what I was going to say, to make sure that the way that you're processing this will pass muster with the audit and the state review and so forth, so.
So, Jody, is that pretty much just housekeeping? We can still make this motion, that's just something you can do after?
Yeah, um, we approve all of this, and then when the auditors are here, I will talk to them about how specifically they need to see this to make it kosher.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the request, the three requests for the senior center, as presented by court here.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by treasurer Anbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Oops, sorry.
Do we have to add, like, an addendum saying, provided the auditor okay's it, or is that just...
I think that's what we can work out. We need to change it, we will.
Well, as long as it's clear that it's going to administratively be handled through the auditor to make sure everything is, is proper and lawfully done, uh, I, I think that's pretty clearly understood here. If there is a problem, the auditor will indicate and you'll need to come back to the board, so if there is a problem, it will come back to the board.
Yeah, because sometimes a motion needs to include that, that part, and other times it does, so I just want to make sure it's on the record that we still got to check in. Okay, thanks.
Any, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carries. Thank you.
As a Karen, I, I thought, and that's why I told Luanne that I was going to talk to the auditors, because they write and say, you need to open up a different account, because it's ruined that township.
Ordinances, certain ordinances that state violations, municipal civil infractions. Attorney Jop?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Supervisor. Uh, this is, uh, the fir, there are two items on your agenda regarding municipal civil infractions. This is the first of the two, and this is the general ordinance that, um, I've prepared for the board based upon our prior discussions in your direction, to, uh, enable the township to take advantage of the existing state law that allows townships and cities and villages to punish violations of local ordinances by way of a civil infraction penalty, as opposed to a misdemeanor penalty. Uh, in a sense, this decriminalizes a number of the ordinances, it does not decriminalize ordinances such as drunk driving, assault and battery, and things of that nature. What it decriminalizes are offenses, um, in the township that are more along the lines of, of property maintenance issues, uh, storage of cars and vehicles on properties that are in violations of ordinances, violations of, uh, fire prevention code, uh, and various other types of offenses. The list could go on, and that, we'll get into that with the second ordinance that, that is on your agenda this evening, I'll go a little bit further into that. What this does, it sets it up as, uh, a civil infraction, as I said, as opposed to a misdemeanor. A misdemeanor is simply punishable by either 90 days in jail and/or a fine of up to $500. So our district court judge would only have the option of sending a violator to jail, or giving them a fine, or doing both, when it comes to violations of these types of offenses in the township. This, as, on the other hand, does not involve any jail time. Uh, what it does is it provides that the district court judge is authorized by the township to institute a fine against the violator, and it's an increasing fine, the first offense would be a $200 fine, and any subsequent offenses would be a $500 fine. So repeat offenders, their fines would increase if they continue to refuse to comply with township ordinances. The, um, ticket would be written in a different manner, as you can see, this ordinance provides for the authorized officers of the township, and I've tried to carry over your existing authorized officers, are, will be able to write these citations, uh, and there are provisions in here that are necessary to implement pursuant to the state statute that allows for this. It also provides the district court judge an opportunity to, in addition to any fines, to also order the person to comply with the ordinance, to stop what they're doing by way of a court order indicating, for example, if, um, there is a failure to maintain property in a safe manner, creating a public danger, the district court judge could order the individual to cease and desist that activity on their property or on somebody else's property, uh, and to no longer engage in it, and if it's a cleanup matter, the district court judge would have the authority to order the property to be cleaned up. Uh, any other violations of different types of ordinances might need different types of judicial orders to gain compliance. Typically, what the township would have had to do in the past is take such matters up to circuit court and incur all the expenses of circuit court, which is a much more expensive place to litigate these matters, which oftentimes are very simple matters that can be taken care of much more easily. So this enables that in the hopes of saving the township some funding, uh, and expenses on expensive lawsuits, and also giving the district court judge more, um, options for purposes of enforcement, and what some might consider more suitable options, considering the types of offenses that are involved. The one thing that I wanted to point out is that, uh, in this ordinance, as I mentioned earlier, I provided a simple fine for the first offense of $200 and $500 for subsequent offenses, for repeat offenders. That's a number I plugged in there. This is clearly something that I've indicated to my cover correspondents, as a matter for you to decide, not for me. I got that by looking through all of the township's current ordinances, which have fines ranging from up to $100, up to $500 and more dollars on the misdemeanor type offenses. So I kind of tried to find some middle ground there for you to start with, but if you feel that another number is more appropriate, less or more, uh, please, uh, that is clear, it is purely up to you to decide. If you're good with my numbers, wonderful, but if you feel something else is more appropriate, that's fine as well, and we just need to include that as part of your motion. The last thing I wanted to mention is there is a type of graphical error in page two, section three, uh, sub paragraph three C, it, the, the second to last line... The second-to-last line indicates for whom the authorized local office is acting, it should be officer. So I forgot the R and the word officer, and that would be one, we would want to correct that before it goes into our ordinance book. Do you have any questions? Have you had any answers though? Otherwise, this would be considered by a roll call.
I do have one question, and just so everybody knows too, before we get to this point too, every effort will be made to work with that individual to try and solve the problem that we have. So it's not like we're going to immediately, unless it's an immediate safety or health and welfare concern, but we're going to take every effort we can to try and work with the individual, solve the problem before it gets to this point. The only question I have, Attorney Jopp, is who determines the timeframe between repeat offenses? Like, if the problem isn't, would that be addressed in the first ticket? That they have so many days with a subsequent secondary amount issued at that time to another ticket? By us, it would remain off the first ticket? You know, to get to that next level, is what I'm getting at.
Yes, the way that this is written is if there is a subsequent offense, there is no limit in the amount of time between the first and second offense, and it would be in the ordinance enforcement officer's discretion on whether to write it as a first or a second offense.
But we're talking, it could be years. Two years later, they do the same thing.
It could.
Potentially.
Yes, it could be years, and for some types of offenses, that's not necessarily a bad thing.
I got one in my head.
If it's years too, we could automatically jump to the next amount, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Good enough.
Under repeat offense, and this is just to clarify for me, because I'm not a lawyer, shall that exceed $500 plus cost and other sanctions? Other sanctions meaning?
Yes, if you look two sections down, there is a provision for costs, assessments, sanctions, damages, and expenses. This is a provision that allows the township to have the opportunity to pursue the recovery of costs of prosecution and the ordinance enforcement officer's time, and if any other, you know, if it's a planning, a zoning type offense, you might have your planner become involved and things of that nature. Additionally, if it's an egregious violation or multiple violations, it gives the district court judge the opportunity to initiate sanctions against the individual to go over and above the fine and put some sanctions on there to help motivate compliance.
Just wondering how everybody feels about the two dollar amounts. I mean, you said we're going to go try everything else before we get to this, but if we start issuing these, and you started at $200, is it going to be worth the time and effort if that person doesn't pay to try to get them to pay? You know what I mean? Do we start lower and say, okay, let's?
I wouldn't recommend lower, because if it gets to that point, trust me, we've exhausted every resource.
Because I don't want to incur more expense just trying to collect that amount.
Our goal is?
No, I can't pay you.
And I agree with you. Our goal is not to penalize the individual or charge him money. Our goal is to fix the problem, motivate them. That's it.
Mr. Supervisor, could I add something to that here? In terms of the repeat offenses, the way that this is written is that every day that an offense occurs, an additional ticket could be written. So if there is a situation where you have a very serious violation that is a major concern, and the person is not responsive to the initial notice that's given that there's a violation, please straighten it out. If they don't respond to that, and it's very serious, and you issue a ticket, ordinance enforcement officer issues a ticket, and that doesn't gain compliance, even before it gets before the judge, additional tickets can be written, and in a way, fines could start stacking up, and in that way, if it needs additional fines, that would be in the discretion of the ordinance enforcement officer.
So it doesn't have to go to court to decide that it's a repeat offense? We decide that, or the ordinance officer decides that?
Well, the ordinance officer will decide to issue repeat tickets, additional tickets. The judge will make the decision on whether the person is responsible for each of those tickets. So the judge might?
I like that.
Yes, it provides a lot of different options for enforcement. Individuals that want to comply, they may never have known that they were in violation. They get the notice, and I think in most instances, when individuals get notice from the township that, hey, you're in violation of this ordinance, please take care of it within 30 days. They didn't even know that they were in violation, and in most cases, they may call, find out more information, and clean it up, or straighten it up, or?
Absolutely. Myself personally, I think the first one's too light. I would like to see half of the secondary amount, like at 250, because honestly, if it gets to that point, I can tell you, there's been a lot of time exhausted, a lot of effort, and it's just because that individual doesn't want to play golf with us. I mean, we've bet over backwards for certain individuals, and these are repeat offenders that are not willing to change.
You were saying, right? Yeah.
Yeah, they're not willing to go along with the ordinances, and some of these are very serious issues, very serious matters that need immediate attention, and the more that we could entice somebody to conform, I'm all for it with that. Once again, our goal is not to punish them monetarily, but to solve the problem as quick as we possibly can for everybody involved.
Steve, would this be a change of the ordinance, or is this a new ordinance?
This is a new ordinance. The next ordinance does change some ordinances.
As far as a motion, it's a new ordinance. It's to add this ordinance.
That is correct, yes. And at the beginning of, the very beginning of the ordinance, you can indicate, you can see that it indicates ordinance one, municipal civil infractions, is hereby added to part seven of the book of ordinances. So that's what this first ordinance is doing, is adding a brand-new ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve the municipal civil infraction ordinance with one change of $250 as the amount of the first offense fine. And this ordinance is to be added to civil infractions, part seven. Did I cover it?
Of ordinance one.
Of ordinance one. Yes, I covered it.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion? All, and Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Churchy?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Anbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, just before you go on, just so everyone knows, this has to be published, and then it doesn't go into effect until 30 days after it's been published in the newspaper.
When's the earliest you can get that in the newspaper? When's the earliest you think we can get that in the newspaper?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday? Okay, thank you. Ordinance amending certain ordinances to designate violations as municipal civil infractions. Attorney Jopp?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Supervisor. This is the second ordinance I was discussing, and this is the ordinance that identifies and goes through all of the township's existing ordinances in its book of ordinances, and identifies those that will be changed from a misdemeanor to a municipal civil infraction. If the board wants me to, I'd be happy to go through each of these, but there are, I think about 26 of them.
I have to work at three o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
Yes, exactly.
We actually did this at one point. Went through the long line.
Oh, in a meeting? That could have happened. Because I didn't, that is, I thought you went through the process of it, I apologize, I misunderstood. Yes, at a prior meeting, we did talk about which ordinances. I provided a list of proposed ordinances, and the board took a look at that and agreed with the ones that I was pointing out, and they are all in here. And the ones that were questionable, I reviewed them very carefully. Both Prosecutor Snell's and my office and myself looked at them very carefully and decided how to best handle those. So like I said, it does go through, in here are things such as the sign ordinance, property maintenance ordinance, property address identification ordinance, where you have to provide, you have to have your property properly addressed, so the fire department can get there and so forth, unlawful storage, animal control ordinance, and so on and so forth. All items that will be decriminalized, as I explained earlier, if you adopt this.
And one other thing too, I'd like to set up a meeting between Attorney Joppick and Chuck Snell and our co-enforcement officer, the four of us prior, or if this does get approved, so that we all start on the same page and have discussion of how to proceed with existing litigation that's in place, so that we're all on the same page, if you think that would be wise.
Yes, I do, and the state law provides for different types of tickets to be issued in connection with this, and so we're going to have to make arrangements to get citation new ticket books.
Yeah, I want to be sure we have an SOP down, so that we're right on point with everything.
Very good. And, I'm sorry, one last point is kind of important, and I want to make sure it is out there for everybody to be aware. It does include the zoning ordinance and making that into a civil infraction. So violations of the zoning ordinance, which is probably one of the more common ordinances we encounter, would become a civil infraction, and all of these additional tools for the district court judge would be put into place for those violations.
Any questions for Mr. Joppick?
I'll make a motion that we pass the ordinance amending certain ordinances to designate violations as municipal civil infractions. It's added to part seven, administration enforcement of the Lenox Township Book of Ordinances.
Support. Motion made by Trustee Churchy, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Churchy?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Anbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for your work on that. Very good. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. And just if I may, real quick, we are now working on the next stage, which is the other part of this that we discussed with the board, which was looking at the criminal ordinances, the ones that are remaining misdemeanors, the police ordinances, and updating those. So those will be coming to you in the next week or in some days.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Township planner interview selection. I believe email sent around regarding dates, times for interviews and selection purposes of how many of the firms would be liked to interview. I believe it was discussed that three was the number, so open to suggestions here.
I browsed briefly through each one, because like I said, I was out of town last week, and just made a few notes on different things about each plan. The one planner, Beckett and Raider, the only local area that they work at, they've done work in Marysville. Okay, it's in their $750 a month, and their reviews are hourly. So they were kind of on the bottom of my list. I don't know how everybody felt that one. The McKenna one, they are very diverse and everything, but they're still quite far out of area, Northville, Kellmazoo, Cleveland. Although Carlisle is Ann Arbor, they show a lower retainer fee, but they also have a lot of different things at hourly rate, and their experience has widely varied. So, because they also had, like, landfill experiences, stuff like that, so they were kind of like my third.
The Carlisle group also has one in Clemmons' office.
Pardon me?
They have one in Clemmons' office.
Okay. All right, so that would be my third choice. My second one to interview would be clear zoning, because I do have questions whether their, one member still works for that company. His name, his bio is not in there, but he's mentioned later in the book. Okay, they have done work for us before, but they're still kind of half work in the city, half work in areas like ours. My third one to interview for me would be community planning and management. That's the one we use now. They are very local, I mean, all around us, and it's McComb, and a little bit in Oakland, and only one spot. So, because I'd like to keep it as close as possible. So my three would be community planning and management, clear zoning, and Carlisle. I don't know how anybody else felt.
Those were the three I had.
I chose the same three.
I had, I narrowed it down myself. I had Beckett and Raider, Reader, however, but then discovered how far away they are too. So I do have clear zoning, community planning, and Carlisle is my three. Would you have any other?
After reviewing, I'm still, to me, it's very clear that we do have the right firm still in place. I mean, I'd be happy to interview them, but nothing that I've seen so far makes me even want to consider change. Mr. Mober, I think has done an outstanding job at a very reasonable cost. I have zero complaints with him, working for the township. So I've looked at these other proposals and made notes, and nothing jumps out to me. Like I said, we have experience with the one that we want to re-interview. He was here for how many years? We changed from him. To bring him back, put us right back where we were, in my opinion. I don't think anything's changed with them. I'll be happy to look at anything, but to me, it's based on?
As long as you approach it with an open mind and interview, that's, and we're just by, you know, just narrowing it down now, talk to three, because who knows? We may keep end up with that, but maybe also, while interviewing that firm, we can fine-tune that who's going to do the work for us, and how it's going to get done, and say, okay, we need this done in a certain timeframe, and he'll, they'll be able to tell us if they're capable of doing it. So I'd like to approach those three with an open mind as far as, see what they can tell us.
Would you go over the list to get, who are you asking for? CPM, clear zoning, and Carlisle?
Yes.
Is that, somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion that we interview for planners, community planning and management, clear zoning, and Carlisle.
Support. Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye, closed. Opposed? Motion carries. What? Anybody got any ideas? I believe, Jeanette, did you have those dates?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's cut down because I'm on vacation, the 9th through the 15th, and those are the two dates that I'm available, everyone to do it this month, August 19th and 27th. I can do either.
27th I could be available, but the 19th I'm not. If lines are in the evening, it's fine for me, you know, get to one of those, it's okay.
Well, with three, I think it's reasonable to do, set out hour blocks, do 45 minutes interview process, and if we have to go over five minutes or so, it still gives time to regroup before the next interview process, but I think it could be done in three hours.
You think it's six o'clock?
Six o'clock to nine o'clock.
If this far in advance, I can tell Ward would say, look, I have to be out by this time.
Unless anybody would like to go five to eight, or six to nine is an option.
What do you guys wanna do? Attorneys, we did them on Wednesday, we started at six.
Six o'clock?
Because, yeah, because I came from Port Huron, and I usually know for sure what time I'd have to work.
Well, is anything earlier than six o'clock an option, or no? That's, I guess, one thing we have to establish, I don't have the whole day.
It's pretty hard, so.
Six o'clock, then, six o'clock to nine o'clock is the time period?
And we're looking at the 27th.
I let, you know, unless I do that Tuesday, because Tuesday I have the least amount of deliveries, and I can try to, try to get the bosses to do them, if you want to, if you think six o'clock is getting late, I don't, you know, I don't wanna keep everybody because of me later.
If it's an option to go earlier, I mean, we'd definitely be open to the option, I think anybody would, correct?
You're not gonna know that.
Well, I'll just put in for it, and say, well, can you, can, you know, so-and-so do the.
Why don't we make a tentative based on what you tell us, if.
You know what, just set it up for five, I'll just tell them, because Tuesday I only have two deliveries, and somebody else can do those, otherwise we're here too late, and then you don't, we get too.
27th, five to eight, 45 minute intervals with 15 minute, and we can base that 45 minutes however we want, half hour with 15 minutes questions, or whatever the board decides at that time, as far as order, before, I think, Jeanette, you pulled names out of us, you just randomly picked, so there's no preferential treatment in order, we'll do the same again, I'll let Jeanette do it unless anybody else wants to pick them, it doesn't matter to me.
Unless you want to do the present one last, only so we know what other questions to ask him, because we know him.
Do you wanna pick order right now, that way it solves?
You know, I mean, it's just a suggestion, I don't know, what does everybody else know?
That's fine, you know what, that's fine, but I mean, that way it solves the problem right now, is there? Perfect. Probably I'll start with Steve. So, that'll work, a little early. We'll go Carlisle Wortman, clear zoning.
It's fine, yeah.
Community planning, everybody in agreement?
Yeah.
I'd be 27th, Tuesday.
You want me to follow along?
That would be great, 27th, five to eight, so the five to six, Carlisle Wortman, six to seven, clear zoning, seven to eight, CPM.
Make a motion?
Sure.
Make a motion that we set the time schedules for the interviews for our planners for August 27th, so Tuesday from five till eight, with Carlisle Wortman first, clear zoning second, and community planner third.
Support. Motion by Treasurer Ottenbacher, supported by Clerk Keith, any other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Attorney Jopik, aye too, so. Attorney J, set special meeting for township policy and guidelines manual. Well, this is, Jeanette, did you have any dates in mind? I believe Attorney Jopik will be there also, correct?
Yes, I'd also like to have Attorney Ames Bukler from the office there, who is the employment specialist.
Did we discuss any tentative dates on that?
No, we didn't.
Okay.
It's just that we've been going back and forth through emails, and there is a lot of information, a lot of things that need to be changed.
Based on the attorney schedule too, I think this is something that we should probably kick some out.
I wasn't sure if all of you want to be there, that's completely fine, if you want to set up like a little committee and have like two members, and if you have any time that's convenient.
Yeah, I do not have her schedule with me already now. If there was gonna be a decision, I was gonna ask for, you know, the possibility of maybe two or three dates that I could bring back and.
Right.
Are we talking evening, daytime?
Either or. Evening would probably be a little more open on her schedule. According to your email, what you were saying, well, there's a lot, I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of things that, so I'm almost thinking all of the board if we can, I mean, would you agree with that, there isn't that many issues? Well, not necessarily, you know, if all of the board wants to participate, that's perfectly fine, but we don't necessarily need all of the board present for this, if there are two or three, if we get to three, of course, we have to notice it as a public meeting, with two members, we can, we have a lot more flexibility in that regard, don't have to comply with special meeting notices and so forth, and perhaps it might not be a bad idea to go through all of this, all of these changes, maybe with just two of the board members at first, to see if there are any real big issues with what we are identifying as the issues, and then go from there.
Have a summary meeting afterwards?
Yes, I think so, that might be a better route, if the board's comfortable with that, but we'll work with whatever the board wants to do.
I'm comfortable with that, but Chris, I'd like you to be there because you were the one that sat with the.
I'm okay with that, but my schedule's pretty tight.
Well, it would have to be during the morning.
Oh, if you did it during the day, yeah, I could do it any day, because I work afternoons, so I know you said that would be a little more difficult for you.
Well, I know, and I compared our schedules about a week and a half ago, or a week ago, I think it was, and there were two or three dates that we both met up for mornings through, in this month.
Then I'll be there.
Yeah.
Literally, I could do any morning.
Well, let's face it, we waited this long, we've worked on this manual for how many months?
True. One thing that hurt.
Let's do a few more days, figure out what works, and definitely, I feel Chris should be.
Why don't you shoot the dates to us, and who else, I mean, we need to pick a second person.
I'll be able to sit down then.
I'll work around your schedule, you know, when you say you can.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And I don't care as long as it's somewhere, before a big decision is made, I wanna be a part, but I don't care about sitting in originally. Like to see what.
And just so everybody knows, I can receive emails, I can't send them off for some reason, so if I'm not responding to your emails, that's why, I don't know, if it's something I think, I'll try to call you, but right now.
Make a motion that we table the set special meeting for township policy and guidelines manual, instead of having the attorneys have a meeting with just two of the board members to go over the document.
Support. Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher, any other questions, discussion? Who's gonna be handling setting the dates, Jeanette? Who's that?
Yeah, pretty much, just let me know what they are, and I'll let you know, and you can set it up with Steve.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. How's the jury term? Staples Advantage Cost Reduction Proposal, would you give a quick brief summary, please, Jeanette?
Well, we wanna try to save money wherever we can, I thought it would be to the township's best interest to look at, we were spending some of our money, we've had a few different vendors for a long time, and Kevin checked our prices terribly, so I took a bunch of invoices, and I sent them to Staples, Staples Advantage is the program, and they took our office supply, our company that we use coffee, ones that we use, our rugs that we have every month cleaning, and they compared to what they have, and first, they came back with apples to apples comparing the exact same products, and they were 11% cheaper, she went back and fine tuned it, and gave us government pricing, and they are 20.4% cheaper than what we're using now in all categories, and it was just amazing to me, we took our list, and we went online, Veronica did the other day, and Standard has now raised their prices on their website, so that 20.4% is even greater, I'm not sure exactly how much, because their prices were, like I said, they went up as of July, it's a great program, you just call the day before you want them, the next day they're delivered here, just like what we've been used to all these years. Denny, I know already, does use Staples, but he goes there, I believe, no, not anymore? Do you use Staples still?
Yeah, I find the markets to use Staples for over 10 years, in community quill before that, in Kansas County Staples, like Jen said, I order today, live tomorrow, and no charge for the order.
Right.
So, I don't recommend you use Staples.
Yeah, Quill came in, we had a representative in the area about two weeks ago, and I looked at their catalog, and I went on their line, their prices were so much higher than Standard's, it was unbelievable, so I didn't even give her our prices, because they were already higher, it's a great program, they also, if you enroll in the Staples Advantage, we also get enrolled in the National Price Purchasing Partners, and I gave you a pamphlet on that, and they have many, many companies that has government pricing.
It's a network for government pricing.
Right, and you can purchase just about anything, Verizon, even though we don't have Verizon, but any employee here can take their pay stub to a Verizon, if that's what provider they have, and get like a 13% off their bill, a monthly, which is awesome. So, they have all kinds of companies, they have a long list, I just gave you a sample of what they have, they have a representative that would work with us on any products that is out of that 20%, or, and they could work with us to find, what we're using, they don't carry, they would work with us to find a comparable at a lower rate.
So what would the process be, we wouldn't have employees just going online and?
No, it would, it would be the same process that we do now, we would give our list to our receptionist, and once a week, she would call it in, say, this is what we need, and the next day we would have it, it would be delivered here to the township, and like Denny said, there's no delivery fees, right now, all our bathroom supplies, we use another company out of Port Huron, and they charge to deliver here, but I found out that I can get it at Staples.
Being that this is quite a lot of money, wouldn't this have to go off the bids? I mean, I love the idea, I love it, but according to the, to our SOPs, anything over $1,000 has to go off the bids, I just wanna make sure we're covering that.
Totally not over $1,000, I took just this month's bills, and it came to $485, and our savings would have been $100 just for this one month.
Chris says $1,000 for a list that's been.
I agree with that, and there are items in here that are over $1,000, but is it for the year, or is that bid for every month? I mean, if we can do it without going off the bids, I'm all for it, I just wanna make sure.
Depends on our orders, basically, also as far as the amount.
Do we have to sign a contract for them, or are we just?
No, just tell them you wanna start running the program.
There's no fee for the program, or you don't have to, are you required to purchase so much per month?
No, no, there's not, in the first 90 days in the program, we get an extra 10% off of everything and anything, from printers to office furniture, to you name it, they carry it, we can get 20, 10% off.
Well, like I said, I'm all for it, I just wanna make sure we're covering bases, and we don't have to go off the bids.
Standard used to be very competitive, and the sales, a salesperson went out of his way to get us the best price he could, he returned it out, and it hasn't been the same since then.
Here, what's your thoughts?
Well, I don't have the bid policy in front of me to really take a, real careful step at it, but it is within the board's discretion and unique circumstances to waive its own bid policy, of course, you wanna exercise that ability to waive the policy very carefully and very frequently, but, you know, if there are unique circumstances in connection with this particular type of vendor, where it's differentiating itself in such a way that it's set itself apart, and it's meeting all of the needs of the township, and serving the best interests of the township financially to do so, those could be bases to.
Well, if we didn't go off the bids, that's my only thing, like I said, just trying to.
My argument would be to that is they are currently used by the township, correct?
Yes.
For absolutely everything?
No.
So that's, like I said, just wanna be sure.
Not for that particular item, this is for office supplies, we've never had to do that before, for office supplies.
If you're looking at a big dollar, or like a flyer, perhaps, yeah, then you need to go off the bids and stuff like that, but for office supplies for monthly, we'd never get anything ordered if we had to go off the bids every time we do something, like I said, we've been using, I've been using Staples for over 10 years, we have three cards, one's basically a charge card, so if I order online, enter the number from that, or if I'm at the store, the other one is the Staple Rewards Card, you put that number in there, because what happens is you spend so much money every month, they in turn send me a paper coupon, $20 off, $50 off, okay, and then the third one is our tax, tax exempt, so we don't pay any taxes on everything, anything, including, you know, the delivery, because the delivery's always free, so, it's a simple, it's a simple deal.
And as Jeanette said, we already utilize Staples, we already utilize Standard, it just depends on what you're buying, I've learned of Staples to get printers, so we already, we're just, we're just shifting gears on what products.
I guess it kind of boils down to, do we wanna have five different vendors, or do we wanna have one different vendor?
Also, Jeanette has already, she's kind of in-house checked the prices, you know, so. You said you checked Standard, you checked, you compared.
Exactly, and I would say this, I would say, she's saying this much, this much savings, if anybody finds anything cheaper past this point, then we go to that person, and we keep jumping, she always to get the best price, I guess.
That's the thing, and I agree with that, and you're only gonna find that out if you do LPs, like I say, request for, it's basically, your request.
I don't know how you can do that, but.
The representative I was working with, she said that most companies that she's talked to, when there is a 6% savings, they switch, we started out with an 11% savings, and we went to over 20% savings. We started out with an 11% savings and we went to over 20% savings. So that's, that's significant. The other, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought you were, I thought you were.
One real quick thing. The coffee, they do not have a coffee machine rental program like we've been used to, but they've got coffee machines. They've got kind of just is one cup at a time. That makes it really nice because there's not a lot of coffee drinkers in our building anymore and it only takes a second to brew a cup of coffee. And you can get the reusable little wrap things and you put your own coffee on it. Everybody can have their own coffee or hot chocolate, whatever. But it's pretty reasonable there, too.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Trusty Boyd has been kind enough to provide me a copy of the current existing expenditure controls which forms your bid policy in the township. And the way this is worded indicates that if there are goods or services exceeding a contract cost of $1,000, they require at least three written quotes in the bid process that would apply. Here, you're looking to a source for multiple different goods. And in this regard, you'll basically be placing orders for certain goods. And the way that I read this is that if any of those goods individually exceeds $1,000, then you would have to go out and get proposals. So if you're going to order a substantial computer that exceeds $1,000 from Staples, you're going to need to get bids from other places as well. But if you're ordering a box of pencils, under the way that this is written, it's not, it's not requiring you to go out to bid. I have seen bid policies that talk about where you pull together a number of different goods and accumulate an amount above the bid policy requirement and it either, depending on the community, it may require you to go out to bid for that, other communities may not. Here, our township does not have that. And that's by all means not a criticism, it's just identifying, this is not in this bid policy. And so I really have no other choice but to read this as a good by good basis, item by item basis, as long as it doesn't exceed $1,000. You're not going to be required to go out for bid each time you order from Staples. And the board as a policy matter could certainly identify a program from one company to start with. It's not excluding your ability to get items from other companies.
At any time.
I don't believe this is an exclusive type of arrangement, is that correct?
Oh, exactly.
Hold it in.
Okay.
Right, if you find, you see a different special on something else, you're going for it, right? Exactly.
So basically what you're deciding here is to go with this program that Staples has provided as one of your sources for these, for these office supplies. And if any one of those items in any order exceeds $1,000, then the department head is going to have to bring it forward as a bid proposal. And thank you, by the way, for providing that.
Always prepared.
Make a motion that we approve the use of Staples Advantage with the process being the same as it is today where you contact the receptionist to place the order for supplies.
Support.
Thank you. Question by Paul Keyes, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you, Jeanette.
You're welcome. Can I just make one more comment? I forgot to mention the carpets that we have rented through, well, yeah, we rent through a company. And we have, I think, two rugs or three rugs and every, what is it, Karen, every other month it's happened.
Centus.
They swap them out for clean rugs. That is like $59, I believe it is, for every two or three months. We can purchase a rug less than that and it's ours, it's a one-time cost, it's ours, and they just take them off, hose them off outside and they're as clean as new.
Yeah, I think we would discuss, get two and have one always clean. One of the guys, RTBW come in, they just could grab one, take it back to their building, squirt them off, clean them, and keep turning them out.
A really large savings also.
Didn't we say that years ago?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. General May and Whipple.
Now that it's out of time, the, we have a new, that John, John Abbott started as the in-house audit after last year's audit. So I would like to have Karen from District of May and Whipple come in and sit with him for a day and go through all of the things for the county that's needed and all the other reports that they're going to need when they come in so that he knows exactly what they're looking for. It would be Karen, it wouldn't be Paul, so it'd be less expensive. And I've already talked to Paul and he would be willing to send Karen out for the day.
I think that's a great idea. That is one way to ensure that he's on point and everything's covered.
There's a lot of things that they need from the county and schedules and stuff like that, so.
We have no idea on the cost because we don't know how long it'll take. We have no idea on the cost because we don't know how long it'll take. What if the cost is a trade?
Did you know how long it's going to take?
No, I don't know the cost. That's why I said it'll be, hopefully just a day would be enough. And it would be, it's not, we're talking about coming in. If you want to table this for a month, then I'll find out the cost, but this gives you two months.
If something that needs to be done.
It needs to be done. I think that they're going to be that out of sight, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the trading for, who's it?
I can't hear you.
Who's the trading for?
John Knapp.
I'd make a motion to approve the trading for John Knapp through Whipple and, sorry. Okay, for, trading for, as presented by Ms. Key.
Support.
I'm tired.
Motion made by Trusty Boyd and supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other question or discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Sale of Fire Department Property, Chief.
Back in the spring, I provided you information. I was contacted by a neighbor of ours at Station Two, Cinemark Farms. They were interested in purchasing five acres of our property that butts in a joint up to their property. They're located on 32 Mauro. That time, the board directed me to pursue the issue, which I did. My first contact was with the Township Assessor and she gave me a estimated market value of $10,000 an acre. I then forwarded a letter per the board to Cinemark Farms and requested that they provide a, a proposal, sorry, provide a proposal to us. And I forwarded that to the board. Several months had gone by and finally, last month, he did finally provide a proposal. Proposal's two-thirds of the market value. I gave you a copy of his proposal, the letter. And at this time, it would be my recommendation that we decline the offer and if the board follows that and then directly forward a letter to him advising him. So that's way under market value with that cost. And I'm sure eventually the economy will turn around, plus it's landlocked. So right now, it's not costing us a dime to hold on to it. But, you know, market value's $10,000. We paid 11,000 or 12,000, I think it was closer to 12,000 an acre back in 99. And I don't have the letter in front of me, I'm sorry. I think he proposed 32 or 35.
37.
3700. That's, to me, that's not an acceptable, not even anywhere near acceptable price. So it'd be my recommendation, we decline their offer and move on.
This was a good tool to see where we stand with that and, you know, where they, they stand with it. And I thank you for taking the bow by the horn and taking care of it. I do agree with you that this is something that we would want to move forward on.
So I would need a motion from the board directly.
I make a motion that we not accept the offer of $3,700 for the five acres as offered by Cinemark Farms for the property behind Station Number Two.
Could you add to, direct the chief to send a letter?
And the chief would send a letter stating this to Cinemark Farms.
Support.
Motion by Trusty Boyd, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, everybody.
Public comment? Yes, ma'am, please step forward in, please.
My son, I would stay here and shut up and not say one word. I didn't know he has camera. He might find out. He loves his old son, you know?
Thank you, ma'am.
He has a problem, he's 67 this year. He says, "Oh, mom, please, you know." He was going to, he was going to pay for my senior nursing home and then when he got married, I actually got a girl, he says, "Mom, you're on your own," so I guess I'm not going to be here tonight. I was just going to ask him where, I, you changed your R, I actually made a mistake when I was saying about the footage on the, on the other problem with the.
Did you call him?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. The problem I was talking about, I said 15,000 of the sand in the, I'm tired, too. Not, not with the landfill, but it was with the other problem. It was 1,500 feet and 1,200 feet, not 15,000 feet of sand that is supposed to be removed and taken care of so the lead content wouldn't be bad and our other little problem that we have in New Haven. But I was asking, concerned about that civil infraction, not that there are four people doing things wrong, but once you get up to thousands and thousands of dollars, these people aren't going to put their, not only not have the money, but they're not going to make the repairs, make the adjustments, clean up the act, as they would say. And I'm just wondering, is the city going to come and actually do it for them and then charge them for it like they do in Algonquin? If there's a problem in Algonquin, say you have fallen trees and big bushes growing out of the ditch, which is where we need to have the overflow because as you know, Algonquin floods. And they would do it for you. If you didn't do it yourself, they gave you an amount of time and if you didn't do it, then they charged you. They did it for you and charged you. So I was wondering, instead of just putting these people in jail and giving them $1,000, $1,200, another 500, another 500, they can't even afford to pay for somebody to come and clean up this problem. So I'm requesting, is this community going to pay if that problem? I mean, because you're talking about serious issues that have to be done immediately and then you're putting 250 and you put another 500, another 500. They're not going to come up with the money to pay you or to pay for the services to be performed after that point, is what I'm, just a question. I'm just wondering about that.
Yes, a very good question. And, and I can understand how you might have heard that as part of the presentation. That could be a situation where there are fines and sanctions and whatnot that pile up here. But there are, the great thing about this, these types of ordinances, the civil infraction route, is that there are many other options that the district court judge and the township prosecutor can work with. It all depends upon the circumstance. With all those enforcement tools, the prosecutor and the judge and the code enforcement officer are able to look at the situation and do their best. And the judge obviously has the final say and is the best judge of what's the most appropriate remedy for a particular situation. But all, there are a number of other options besides just racking up fines. One particular situation might call for that sort of treatment and the judge would make that decision. Most do not.
Well, after $1,200, I would think that would be the cap on someone to come up with $1,200. For some people, that would be easily three or four months income. I'm just saying it.
No, you're absolutely right.
For social security, I know, I'm getting $730 a month. And I worked 32 years and I worked to take care of seniors, special ed, dementia, and working in factories, plastic factories and steel factories. And I'm just telling you, that's all that I'm getting for 32 years of hard labor, okay? So I'm just saying, it's not possible for some people to come up with that kind of money. Other than the $1,200, there's got to be a cap on it where you come in and you take care of it right away because it's a danger to the community. Because you're talking about serious infractions here, you're not talking about just basic things.
I can tell you this, and I think Attorney Joffe will agree with me, is that it's, it's not going to get to that point if that individual wants to help with the process.
What does that mean, help?
That means help comply. If they are totally unwilling to comply, not only are we dealing with that individual, but in blight cases, we have to deal with the neighbors on each side that have to also live with that. Where it's a nuisance, it could be of older, it could be of animals, things of that sort. So again, they're dealing with that issue too and devaluation of their home. We, in most cases, I'm going to tell you, we're not going to issue a monetary ticket if these people want to work with us. And I think he will agree with that. We're going to sit down, multiple opportunities, try and get this done. If it comes to hitting them monetarily, it's because they are not willing to work with us and not help solve the problem.
But if they cannot financially repair the issue, I'm asking, is the city going to come in and pay for it to be done immediately? Because you're talking about real strong hazardous problems and then have them pay you back over a period of time. That's.
Try me, I'm wrong, but I think the judge would determine it.
Yes, that is one of the tools that I'm talking about there. The judge will be empowered under the civil infraction orders to be able to do that.
In most cases, too, I can tell you, we have residents that step up to the plate to try and help individuals. Companies offer their services of free containers. We've had situations where free containers have been offered to remove refuge. People have used them for storage. Not, I mean, had every opportunity for people to help and said, "Nope, not doing it," so.
And you had mentioned maybe hiring someone to take care of the situation and then just charging them for it.
After the infractions, after the, after the fines, though. I'm not talking about before, I'm talking about after the fines.
The only thing that we've ever been able to do is add it to the taxes and they don't have to pay it.
Add it to their home tax, you mean? Their property taxes?
If we add it to their tax bill, they could just not pay that portion of it. That portion would go to the county, the county's not going to try to cover it because it's not property tax. And so it's not viable action.
They would still have to come up with paying that eventually, would they not?
And they could just not pay it. We would have no avenue to go after them.
Is that true? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Lawyer?
I would, I would not say never. Again, we're dealing with, any particular circumstance might present options for the township.
Our goal is to solve the problem before it gets to any type of issuance of monetary tickets or sitting down and trying to resolve the problem with the individual. That's our number one goal always. When we receive a complaint, go out and contact that individual, try to resolve it as quick as possible. And I can assure you, that takes place.
I think there's a difference between.
Because we want it done, you know, I mean, you want it done because it's dangerous.
But there's a difference between a resident that will not fix the problem and a resident that cannot fix the problem.
Yes, that's what.
What Mr. Joffe is saying is if they cannot fix the problem, then that is what we will call it. And I'm sure anyway we can. We're not just going to take someone and throw them out of their house because they can't afford it. We don't do that.
That's always a concern because so many people are being thrown out of their house. It used to be eight people a day when.
We don't want to lose our house or we don't want to have an anniversary. We don't want to make life harder for the money, but also we have a job to do here to enforce these ordinances or something else, our attention. We have to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to, it's part of our duties.
All right, just one clarification on that subject, thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am?
I don't think else, so you can hear me. I just want to reiterate the fact that the people of New Haven are depending on you guys to come. guys to come help us. It's extremely important to them, and you have the power to make a change, you know, and we're, we're counting on you. And that's, I want to leave you tonight, I know it's a late, it's already 11 o'clock, and I want you to go home and think about that. We're counting on you to, to help us make a change, and to, you know, to restore the city back where it should be, okay?
Thank you.
Good night.
Any other public comment? Motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support, ma'am?
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any adjournments?